So it is nine thirty seven. I'm going to call the meeting to order. This is a special meeting of the State Board of Education, Monday, February third, and we will start off with a roll call. Suzanne, are you the one doing the roll call this morning?
Yes, I am.
Great.
Okay. Mohamed Jobe.
Is here.
Gray Farin.
I'm here.
Kim Gleason.
I'm here. Good morning.
Caleb Greenwood.
I'm here. Morning, everyone.
Tammy Colby.
Good morning, everyone.
Lyle Jepson.
Here.
Tom Lovett. Jenna O'Farrell. Rich Werner. Secretary Saunders. Chair Samuelson.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you. I do know Jenna had indicated that she's not able to attend. I had not heard from Rich, so I don't know if he will be joining us late. And I believe that Tom had class ending at nine thirty and was going to try to join thereafter. So before we get started, are there any amendments to the agenda? I'd like to propose two things. One is I'd like to take just a minute to speak to the President's executive order that was signed on January twenty ninth to end racial indoctrination in K through twelve schooling. And then I do see that we have a lot of members of the public with us this morning. So depending on if people are just here to listen or if they're here to speak, I've heard from Secretary Saunders that she's not able to join us until ten. And I might, depending on members of the public, it might make sense to take up the Legislative Committee, or at least get that started, just so that we can start at ten with Zoe, because I think the board will have a lot of questions for her. So if that's okay with everyone, I'll just take a pause here to see if anyone disagrees with that approach.
I'm just, I guess my concern, Jennifer, is that I imagine that to be a robust conversation and really critically important. So maybe we, we are intending to do public comment, right?
Yeah.
And we do have a lot of people on the call, so.
Sure. So as I said, what I'd like to do is see a show of hands. If people are here to speak, of course, we will do public comment. We've got fifteen minutes allocated for that. My point was that if there aren't members of the public, it might make sense to scoot ahead. So I already see a hand. But let me just pause and see if there are any other amendments to the agenda. Okay.
I just wanted to let you know that someone in the chat had asked if there was an agenda that they could see.
Yes, it's been posted on our website. Okay, so just briefly, as you all probably are aware, there have been a flurry of executive orders. But there was one that the President signed on January twenty ninth to quote unquote "end racial indoctrination" in K to twelve schooling. I just want the board to know and members of the public to know. I have spoken with the Attorney General Charity Clark about this on a couple of different occasions. And she, she is fully aware of this. And she has authorized me to communicate that if an executive order violates federal law or the Constitution, she will sue. They are analyzing every executive order, including this one. She also said that the Attorney General has already joined two lawsuits and has already won both of those. And I just also want to say that the State Board of Education, on behalf of the Board, we do support all children. And unless and until we are told otherwise, schools and districts should keep doing what they're doing. So with that, I will turn to see if there are members of the public who wish to be heard. And I do see at least two hands. So I will start with Sue Saglowski and then Chelsea Myers. Sue, good morning.
Thank you very much. Good morning.
Good morning.
As a result of a V S B A member adopted resolution, the Vermont School Boards Association formed the Task Force on Collaboration to Benefit All Students to address longstanding structural challenges within the leadership of Vermont's education system. These challenges hinder the implementation of equitable, high-quality public education as mandated by state law. The Task Force concluded its work in September twenty twenty four and issued a report identifying systemic issues and proposing actionable recommendations to improve leadership, governance, and outcomes in Vermont's public education system. I'm providing written public comments that provides a summary of the recommendations from the Task Force report, which included the following two priorities: one, timely and consistent access to valid data; and two, an agency of education and a state board of education that can uphold the statutory roles and responsibilities to public education in a nonpartisan, student-centered manner. I'm going to briefly go over four of the recommendations, four of the six recommendations, because they're relevant to your discussion today. The first is expand and maintain a comprehensive and accurate data dashboard by providing a publicly available, accurate, and accessible dashboard as a mechanism to ensure equity for all students, and by utilizing data as the single most important way to effectively monitor the state's ability to meet its education policy needs. The second recommendation is to improve the capacity of the Agency of Education to meet statutory responsibilities by conducting a comprehensive organizational analysis in order to understand why the A O E has been unable to meet its statutory responsibilities to oversee public education in Vermont. This analysis, inclusive of feedback from the field and an evaluation of the culture of the organization, should result in a redesign to better support agency function. The third recommendation is to utilize the district quality standards to conduct a review of the function of the State Board of Education. The State Board should adhere to the governance standards outlined in Section one thirteen of the district quality standards, and should be required to conduct an annual self-assessment on its own adherence to these standards. And the fourth recommendation is to de-politicize the State Board of Education by restructuring to ensure that it can act in a nonpolitical capacity. The appointment structure should be expanded so that the governor does not have the sole authority for appointing members. The State Board makeup should be more proportionately representative of local school board members from districts that operate a public system K through twelve, pre-K through twelve. The State Board should have adequate resources to conduct its work, either through the budget allocation process or by leveraging A O E resources. So focusing on those first four recommendations, the V S B A opposes the governor's proposal to move all rulemaking under the authority of the Agency of Education. As noted in the Task Force report, the agency is not providing the data necessary to inform decision-making now and underperforms in fulfilling its statutory responsibilities, including policy execution and compliance monitoring. Concentrating more authority in an agency of education that is unable to do the work it is currently responsible for is ill-advised. We support revitalizing the State Board of Education with the governance structure, independence, and resources necessary to meet its statutory obligations and to provide effective leadership and oversight. A stable, high-functioning, and nonpartisan State Board of Education is essential for the ensuring continuity of education leadership in Vermont and re-establishing public trust through vision and accountability. We strongly urge the State Board to exercise independent judgment by taking a position against moving all rulemaking authority to the Agency of Education. Thank you.
Thank you. So Sue, with your testimony, I realized I forgot to say two things. So let me say them now. One, if people do have written comment, please forward them so that they can be linked in the minutes. And the other thing is, I do see that we've got a few members of the public who are here with their hands raised, wishing to be heard. So I'm going to implement or request that people limit their comment to two minutes just so that we make sure that we get through to everybody. So next, I see Chelsea Myers and then Neil Odell. Good morning.
Hi. Good morning, everyone. I'm sorry I'm not in a location to turn my camera on, but still wanted to provide comment nonetheless. I am Chelsea Myers. I'm the Executive Director of the Vermont Superintendents Association. Thank you for the opportunity to share our perspective today. The Vermont Superintendents Association deeply values the role of collaboration and public input in shaping education in Vermont. And we have concerns about the proposal to centralize rulemaking under the Agency of Education. This proposal raises serious questions about further diminishing checks and balances in Vermont statewide education governance. The National Association of State Boards of Education puts it well. State Boards should function as the citizens' voice in education and the stable center of education policymaking, leading efforts to achieve the state vision for equity and excellence through effective, meaningful collaboration with other state policymakers and stakeholders, end quote. That statement gets to the heart of why this proposal is concerning, even within our current appointment structure. First, moving all rulemaking authority to the A O E risks narrowing the range of perspectives shaping Vermont's education system. The State Board of Education, even as an appointed body, provides a space for broader input and public engagement. This proposal moves away from the kind of collaboration that makes Vermont's education system strong. The State Board plays a key role in bringing together educators, parents, community leaders, and policymakers to ensure diverse voices are heard. If we shift too much decision-making power to the A O E, we could lose that critical exchange of ideas. Second, even though the A O E and the State Board are both appointed, keeping their responsibilities distinct helps maintain essential checks and balances. If we consolidate rulemaking and implementation under a single entity, we remove an important layer of oversight that helps ensure well-rounded decision-making. We understand the desire for efficiency, but we must not sacrifice transparency to get it. Instead of concentrating more authority in a system already shaped by gubernatorial appointments, we should be strengthening the State Board's role as a collaborative, independent voice in education. We also would like to call your attention to the separate legislative positions of the Vermont School Boards Association, Vermont Superintendents Association, and the Vermont Principals Association, all calling for more checks, balances, and stability within the state education governance model. We appreciate your time and consideration and look forward to continuing this conversation.
Thank you. Okay, next I see Neil Odell, and then I believe Christopher Young is next.
Thank you very much, Chair Samuelson, and thank you for the time today. My name is Neil Odell, and I represent the group Friends of Vermont Public Education. Part of your work today is to review the governor's proposal for transforming education in our state. And I want to highlight one aspect of the proposed changes today that impacts this body, and that is potentially dissolving the State Board of Education and moving rulemaking authority away from this body and seeding that with the administration. The policy change in the proposal states, and I quote, "By placing rulemaking under the same entity that implements the rules, we can achieve greater efficiency, consistency, and clearer lines of responsibility," end quote. I would argue that this move is counter to the stated improvement indicator, which was to improve predictability and transparency. There's a reason in our democracy that we delegate powers and responsibilities to different branches of government. Having a singular body to both create and enforce the rules is counter to that basic tenet of our democratic system. While it may certainly address predictability, I fear that it will be in a negative direction rather than a positive one. Education rules and regulations will become entwined with political forces, allowing the political whims and inclinations of either party, Democrat or Republican, to drive education policy. This is not the Vermont that we want. What happens to public input when we transition to a closed-door process where appointed officials from a governor's administration get to decide what rules are put in place and what rules are enforced? Accountability is eroded, and the public loses. Please do what you can to retain rulemaking authority, including the ability for the public to participate in that process. It is essential for good governance.
Thank you. Okay, next we have Christopher Young and then Jay Nichols.
Hi, folks. Thank you for allowing me a little bit of time here. I would like just to echo the previous speakers and to say, introduction principal at North Country Union High School and the president-elect of V P A. And I'm on the A O E's policy sprint team for governance. So I was particularly interested to see in the A O E's plan around the succession of the rulemaking to the A O E. Again, I support my colleagues' previous remarks. And from a building principals' point of view, would just add a little bit of context to it. I think the last thing we need right now in our education system is more uncertainty and more change. We are already dealing with immense amounts of pressure, both from the national as well as from the state level. And so the more that we can rely on the State Board of Education to provide that stability over many, many years, and not just to be at the whim of whomever might be in office at the time, I think that would be wonderful. I would hope that the State Board would be able to be the steward for public education for all students in the state, and to give the building leaders and the teachers and the students that sense of stability over time. And that is all I have to say. Thank you very much for the time.
Thank you. Okay, next we have Jay Nichols and then John Castle.
Good morning, State Board members. Jay Nichols, Executive Director of Vermont Principals Association. My public comments today center around my concern for the future of public education in Vermont, in our democracy, and the important role that I believe the State Board can provide. Under the current model of an agency of education, I feel the administration has too much power over public education, and nothing I've seen in the last few years has changed that belief. I've seen decisions repeatedly favor private schools and private entities over public institutions who serve the common good. This has occurred from pre-kindergarten through high school. The V P A has supported a return to a Department of Education that is independent from politics as opposed to an agency that is under the control of a governor. We have proposed in testimony a state board that is more representative of public schools with appointments made by the Senate, the House, and the governor. Our proposal will require appointments of practitioners in the field who are committed to the common good of public education. Whether that change occurs or not, we believe an independent state board that truly represents Vermonters and not special interest groups is critical. Rulemaking, civil rights protections of all students, requirements that center students first, are all principles that a strong state board can adhere to. Please don't give away state board authority, especially during a time of tremendous turmoil and concern in the field. Thank you.
Thank you, Jay. Okay, next we have John Castle and then Jessica Carrollis.
Good morning, everybody. John Castle, I'm the executive Vermont Rural Education Collaborative. I just want to echo many of the concerns that have been shared already. I believe that any proposal to centralize authority in the hands of the Secretary of rulemaking does not mesh with our democratic values as a state. I think it will erode our support for public education. And I think in general, the governor's plan erodes support for public education by over-centralizing authority in too many, too few districts rather. I think as Mr. Young expressed earlier, I think we're in a period right now of great disruption and destabilization around public education. I think we should all be
I apologize. I'm having a real hard time hearing John. John, I wonder if you turn your camera off, if that would be helpful. You're kind of breaking up, at least from my vantage point.
I'm wondering, John, you're now frozen. I was also having trouble hearing. Wondering if you can hear me, it might make sense, even if you want to hang up or disconnect and call in, because you're now frozen. So let me, let me go to I might suggest, let's go to Jess DeCarlos, and then we'll come back to John and see if maybe John can find a somehow better, better quality so that he, we can hear him. Jess, I'll turn it to you.
Great. Thank you so much. Jessica Carrollis, Consulting Services and Lesson Learned from John. I'm going to keep my camera off just so that I can maintain vocal clarity. I do want to just echo what colleagues have said prior to my speaking. And, and as someone who recently was a Division Director at the Agency of Education for eight years, I do have significant concerns about our move away from a constitutionally protected and democratic process of checks and balances, and particularly in my time and tenure at the agency, seeing an increasing move to a politicized perspective in a way from the agency being able to play a core and critical role, which is to provide objective and factual information from nonpartisan individuals that is based on evidence so that people could make informed decisions. Frequently, we have to be in positions in which people are going to disagree, but you want to know that they're making decisions because they've been informed. I have significant concerns that moving rulemaking to the Agency of Education would just exponentially diminish the ability for individuals to provide that objective, data-based information so that people can make informed decisions in what's good for education. Thank you.
Thank you. John disappeared from my screen, just seeing if he's elsewhere. I did understand John to be saying that he was also against the shift in rulemaking from the board to the agency. I was able to catch that much of his comment.
He did also mention the decision based on school board consolidation as well with the districts. I heard him mention that.
Okay, thank you. And do you know, this is the test, what, what was his point about that? Because I did not hear that.
I think he said it was too few districts. I could be wrong, though.
Okay. Is that what other people heard as well? I just want to
I heard five districts, five regional districts, the Winuski Regional District. I can, let me go back to the source I got that from and get back to you.
Okay. But Caleb, you're saying that John was also commenting on the fact that he thinks that five districts is too few?
Yeah, I believe so.
Okay, is that what other board members heard? I just want to make sure that, okay, Lyle isn't, I did not hear that. But let me
Perhaps we could reach out to John and ask him to make sure he's submitting written comments so that we all can read it. I think that might be helpful. Because I, I couldn't hear enough to reach any conclusion on, on the, on the district consolidation.
Okay, yes. So just a reminder, people are welcome to submit comments to the board for inclusion in the minutes. We will also have a public comment at the end of our meeting today, and I will reach out to John. Okay, so I believe that is the end of, I don't see any other hands. Just go through quickly. If you happen to be calling in at star five to raise your hand. I'm not seeing anybody. Okay, so this takes us to our discussion of Governor Scott's education transformation proposal. I don't see that Zoe has yet joined us. You know, we're right at the ten o'clock mark. But you all have in your agenda packet, we received, Tammy, are you adding to this?
I just want to clarify something. My understanding is that the agenda item is not to talk about the entire proposal. It's, it's to talk about the proposed shift of the rules to the agency, but not the entire proposal, correct?
That, that is one component, but so let me, let me just back up a second. Tammy and I received an email last week from House Ed asking us, inviting us to come in and testify about, on behalf of the Board, about the Board's response to the governor's education transformation proposal, and specifically this proposed shift to rulemaking. So the way I interpret that is, and what I would like to structure our conversation as, is one, you know, what are the Board's general comments about the proposal? And two, what are the Board's comments specifically with regard to rulemaking? And three, you know, assuming for the moment that the legislature decides to shift rulemaking to the agency, I'd like to have a discussion, too, about what is, you know, what, what do board members see as the role of the Board? So it's a hypothetical, that, that third conversation piece. But I, I really view this as, you know, the Board was asked to opine on the, the governor's proposal. So this is the reason we're having this special meeting today, and specifically with regard to rulemaking. So I'd like to get general comments and feedback first, and then spend the bulk of our time talking about rulemaking. And then have this conversation about what, what do we see as the role of the Board here? You know, whether or not that includes rulemaking, maybe that's a better way to think about it.
Jennifer, I'm just rereading Annie's, our, our request from the House. The request for the House was the stance on proposed changes included in the A O E's proposal and the same testimony the committee is introduced in asking if you could present any historical context on the S B E pre-A O E while the state-level authority over education was still a department. So I just want to clarify what the request was. I don't think there's anything in there that asked us to comment on the funding component or the governor's component.
I, I would disagree. The way I read that is
That I don't know that isn't, but I think we need to check in with the Board, make sure the Board, everybody has, is feeling comfortable in talking about those two other things. I don't know that everybody prepared for that.
Why would the Board not want the opportunity to comment on the proposal? I don't think that our only voice is with respect to rulemaking. I think the Board has the ability, and I would argue should take the opportunity to comment on the proposal generally, if board members have questions or comments, things that they like about the proposal, things that they wonder about the proposal. And, you know, what I'm envisioning is that we can, I, I would like to be able to go to the legislature and say, here's some of the feedback that Board members provided about the proposal. So let me just pause there and make, I would love to see feedback briefly from board members about whether they would like the opportunity to provide feedback on the proposal. I think it's fair to assume that when Tammy and I testify, and we are currently slated, I believe, for this Wednesday, so two days from now, it is a fair assumption that we might be asked about aspects of the proposal. I do know, and just as an F B I, Tammy, in her capacity as, you know, in her job at A I R, provided testimony last week about the governor's proposal, and was very clear that she was not representing the Board or speaking on behalf of the Board. So we have not been asked, as a Board, you know, what we think about the proposal, but I think it's a fair question. So I will pause there. And I'd like this to be a, a short conversation about fundamentally, does the Board want the opportunity to comment on the proposal itself before we jump into the issue of rulemaking? So maybe can we just take a straw poll, show of hands of people who would like that opportunity?
Can you restate that question, please?
Yeah, sure. This is a straw poll to ask Board members if they would like the opportunity to provide feedback on the proposal generally, before the Board jumps into the conversation about the shift in rulemaking specifically.
Can I ask a question, Jennifer?
Sure.
Yeah, I, I don't think there's a problem with a preliminary conversation. I think part of the problem might be in that the information is pretty incomplete, as other testimony has brought other details. And even the testimony I watched that the A O E did alongside the A P A folks, it was, there were a substantial amount of questions unanswered and not necessarily able to sort of validate and have clarity regarding the origins of the information that was being shared. So that came out of questions from the legislature. I think if we're just looking at that proposal, I don't, I don't feel like that we are in a position to have full information either.
But that's exactly my point. I mean, if there are questions that you would like answered, Kim, I would love to be able to communicate that to House Ed on Wednesday and say, you know, here are some questions that Board members have, and here are places where we feel we need more information. So I'm looking at this as an initial response. I'm not looking at this as, this is the one and only time the Board is going to speak to this. But I think if, if Board members have questions, that just helps to shape the conversation.
Yeah. And so you're not looking for us to have like a, oh, yay, this looks great, or oh, no, this is a problem. And And so in that context, I think a conversation is likely beneficial.
Okay. Lyle, I see your hand is raised.
Yeah, I think we're being asked to comment on an incomplete proposal. And as I worry about being asked several different times about bits and pieces, I would like to see what's the plan. Because frankly, and I don't know if this is public comment or if I'm speaking as a board person, but it is time for change, and we need to do something different. And either we stop complaining about our taxes, or we do something different, and we work towards equity and quality. So I'd like to hear, what is the whole proposal? What does that mean for governance? Does that mean we're being asked to do more or less or not to exist? It would be kind of nice to see what's the plan. So that's my comment. I don't know if it answers your question, Jennifer, about responding to one item within that. I hesitate to do that. It'd be nice to see the plan.
Right.
But we also want to be a partner. I think now is the time for all of us to say, okay, we need to do something different. So let's all get together. It was kind of nice to hear the VSB and the VSA saying they would like the State Board of Education to exist and have more influence. So, but if in reality, that doesn't help, then I think we need to be in a position to do whatever works for our public education system.
Okay. Mohammed, I'm going to go to you. I'm not seeing other hands raised. And again, remember that this is just a, you know, foundational preliminary discussion, because I don't want to like eat into the time that we would then be actually having a substantive discussion. The question is, do board members want the opportunity to have Tammy and me communicate back? Questions that board members have, things that they like about the proposal, things that they don't like about the proposal, areas where they want more information to be able to make a decision. You know, how much of a voice should the board have in all of this? Because if we don't have this discussion, we won't have a voice, and maybe that's what board members want. But if we do want a voice, I think we need to have the conversation. Mohammed?
Yeah, thank you. I echo Dr. Jepson from his comments, and parallel to his comments, I linked the latest info I got from Vermont Diggers around the concept of no supervisory unions anymore, the subdivision of district into five. You can read that into details on your own if you haven't seen that yet. Even with this change as well, there is, if there is a plan, I haven't seen it yet, and it doesn't sound like that plan has been public yet. So yes, it's good to debate about these things, but then we do not have the full picture. Again, we could, we could say what we want, what we need, and I'm appreciative of everyone who commented in support of our existence or the existence of the State Board of Education, because we're here to represent the people and our kiddos who are going to be leading the country, or the country, not just the state in the near future. So yes, we can debate about this, but then where is that going to lead us to? I think our main focus, one of our main focuses, should go back to what we initiated. Distinguishing the AOE responsibilities and the State Board of Education responsibilities, which it's, it just feels like we're forcing this coming maybe. So maybe we should really get back to that work that we started. Thank you.
Caleb?
So I do definitely think we should give them some feedback. As we've heard from the public today, there is a pretty wide consensus from higher up positions that the board should exist and should have authority. And if we don't give them feedback on this proposal, I feel as though we are agreeing with the proposal in that we shouldn't exist. If we aren't giving them feedback, then what is the purpose of what we're doing?
Thank you. Kim?
Hey, thanks. Yeah, thank you, Caleb. I couldn't agree more. And I think we are by statute required to help inform legislation. It's actually one of our required roles and responsibilities. So I think that conversation should happen. That being said, to Lyle's point, the presumption that the report as presented and the data as it exists from that report as a sole source, we, I don't think we can categorically say we want to be part of a solution because this is going to potentially impact tax outcomes. I think we would need to be looking at all data sources. And that was provided by a panel that included Dr. Colby, but others as well that spoke to the national picture. And I think that testimony should inform this discussion as well. Because I'm not sure who said it, but I think the details are not fleshed out in the report that the governor's office has provided. And I think we would not be in a position to be evaluating on its own, the validity of the claims regarding cost savings with new structures. So I appreciate the interest in us being involved in a conversation, but I don't feel as though we should center that around data or presumptions of cost savings, you know, without the full picture. So.
Thanks. Tammy?
My understanding from participating in and reviewing testimony last week, particularly on Friday, is that House Ed, which is the body, you know, we have been asked to testify in front of later this week, is still waiting for a considerable volume of information to come from the Agency of Education with specifics, both for the funding, right? You know, I think they talked about this as the three legs of a stool, right? And two legs, one being the funding side and the other one being the governance side. And in fact, there will be later this week, a comprehensive report coming out on governance. So I did not understand that our testimony on Wednesday was to speak to the other two legs of the stool. My understanding that our testimony on Wednesday was to speak to the specific recommendation around moving the rules from the State Board of Education to the Agency of Education, and to provide additional context on sort of the strengths and limitations that were experienced under previous arrangements between the agency and the state board, and provide that historical context. So to that point, I think it's premature for the board to come out and say much about the other two legs of the stool at this point, because the details aren't there. And we don't have a lot of time today, and I think we have a lot to talk about with respect to just that third leg of the stool. And again, you know, we could clarify with House Ed, but my understanding is our testimony on Wednesday is about those issues, and that House Ed will be waiting to see more information come from the agency before they take that up, the other two legs of the stool up further.
Okay, so, thank you, Tammy. I'm just, I'm going back into the emails that Tammy and I received from House Ed, and it says, and this is an email, January 28th, this was the initial invitation. The House Education Committee is interested in hearing the State Board of Education's stance on proposed changes included in the AOE proposal. In the same testimony, the committee is also interested in asking if you could present any historical context on the SBE pre-AOE while the state level authority over education was still a department. I, you know, we had some back and forth. I then asked if there were specific questions that the committee would like us to answer, and the response that we've got back is, a few of the primary questions the committee would like to explore with you are, one, what does it mean to move rulemaking from the SBE to the AOE? Who would have authority? What would happen to the SBE repercussions on process, et cetera? What are the considerations and pitfalls of doing so? And three, other considerations and questions that the governor's proposed plan raises for the board. So I think it is fair game to have sort of an overarching conversation about board members' feedback on the proposal before we delve specifically into the more fundamental question about rulemaking. So with that, I still don't see that Zoe is on the call with us.
I believe she is here.
Oh, she is?
She was, she was. I saw her. But I don't see her now.
Okay. So when she comes back, if someone could let me know in case I miss it, I will, you know, sort of stop midstream and we will go to her. But what I would propose is I will just take notes, and if there are questions or comments that board members have, that Tammy and I can communicate back to House Ed. And I will, you know, position this as initial feedback, you know, this is not a final response from the board, but these are just our initial comments. I'm happy to take notes and then share that with the committee.
Zoe is here.
Okay, thank you. We will stick a pin in that. And Zoe, I will turn it to you because I know that your time with us is limited this morning. I'm just trying to see where Zoe is. There you are. Good morning. We're going to have sort of a three-part conversation, but we might do this out of order just so that we capture your time with us. One is to talk about the board's general questions, comments that they have about the proposal. Two, to discuss specifically the agency's proposal to shift rulemaking from the board to the agency. And then three, to have a conversation about, you know, what does the board see as the role of the board going forward? So I think it probably makes sense to put a pause on the first part because we can do that without you. I think it would be really helpful to hear, you know, you articulate the agency's position about the shift in rulemaking from the board to the agency, and then invite you, if you have any thoughts about the role of the board, you know, just because information is always helpful. If you have any questions or any thoughts about that, I would invite you to share those as well.
Good morning, everyone. Nice to see you. Thanks for the opportunity. I'm sorry I'm not able to stay for the whole meeting, but I'm pleased to join you for this portion of time. So the Governor's Education Transformation Plan is designed to promote, expand educational opportunities for students, to promote equity across the state, and to ensure sustainability of our system. These are all goals that then collectively we share and have talked about with, among the state board. It's also been collective goals for the Commission on the Future of Public Education. Over the past several months, I think there's been a really clear understanding that the challenges our schools face are enormously complex and require a very multifaceted approach. That was one of the central findings also from the Commission on the Future of Public Education, is that there's no one silver bullet that this really does require a multi-pronged approach that does look at governance and funding and educational delivery. And so you see that reflected in the governor's proposal. This proposal recommends a shift to a foundation formula. The foundation formula is derived from an evidence-based approach where we're prioritizing several explicit policy priorities that Vermont has put into practice, including expanding college and career and early childhood education. And also what we heard clearly through the Listen and Learn Tour were priorities from Vermonters and educators across the state. And so you'll see within the proposal put forward that there have been adjustments based on the unique Vermont context and needs that are building off of an initial report that the General Assembly commissioned about improving our overall efficiency and effectiveness of the system. The proposal also makes recommendations around governance, and that is designed to achieve scale within our system. We have heard consistently from districts across the state that they're struggling to provide their range of services and curriculum and coursework that students desire because of some very serious budget constraints. And we also recognize that there are serious challenges in terms of filling critical vacancies and a need to create more support in terms of specialized resources for our schools. So getting to scale is an opportunity for us to do that, to ensure that we have the right expertise and at the right level of our overall public education system to ensure quality of education in every community across the state and also continuity as well. The third part is really infused within every aspect of this, which is looking at education quality. This proposal is essentially about education quality. It is not simply an approach to think about how we can fund the system, but thinking about how do we fund the system in a way that's going to deliver on our educational goals and ensure equity across the state. Currently, we see that while there's a lot of intent, and we've talked a lot about equity as a state in practice, we're seeing that our lower, our higher needs communities are struggling the most to pass budgets. Over the last several years, we're also seeing that those communities tend to serve higher needs, that communities that tend to serve higher needs students also tend to pay their teachers less. And so we're seeing overall that there are some major equity challenges. And the intention of this approach is to address those challenges holistically, so we can strengthen our public education, build stronger schools, and ensure that every student across the state really benefits from an exceptional education. And so the idea of this proposal is that students that have similar needs receive similar services, and that that's differentiated based on kind of what other, you know, special services they may require. In terms of the specific recommendation to shift rulemaking from the state board to the agency, this was simply a practical consideration. I'm sure, and making sure that there's alignment between the rulemaking and the implementation. It's quite unusual, based on our boards across the state, to have the rulemaking authority and then the agency to be able to implement those rules. So this is simply an opportunity to create that alignment. We foresee as part of the education transformation that there will be considerable updates to the rules as well. So it is a capacity consideration in addition to a practical consideration of being able to create that alignment. And also, it would follow the same process of public engagement that any rulemaking procedures would require. So there would certainly continue to be a very robust process to get feedback from the community around those rules, ensuring that we're really building rules in alignment with the values and the priorities of Vermonters and in recognition of the subject matter expertise of the different content areas where rulemaking would be designed. So it simply really is just a practical consideration. I know that the agency has had in the past oversight on some rules. And so this is a way for us to build a transition simply for that alignment perspective and a practical consideration. So I think I've heard, you know, some questions around kind of checks and balances in the system, but the state board is really not designed or intended to be a check and balance on the agency. I think the shift is really thinking about how do we have clarity around roles and responsibilities to ensure that we're supporting a very, you know, exceptional public education system for the entire state. There's a lot of work to go around. And so I think as we kind of move forward, it's really, that's, I think, the kind of exciting part of this conversation is really beginning to really think about that. I know the state board has been having that conversation for several months around really zeroing in and narrowing down, like what is the core function of the board? And then there's another resource question around that as well. So this is that opportunity. I think we are in a place where we can really think about, how do we continue to elevate our educational opportunities as a state? And then really, we should have form, follow, function, right? So the focus really is on what are the educational opportunities we want all of our students to have across the state of Vermont? And then what's the role of the Agency of Education in supporting that? What's the role of the state board? What's the role of the commission? All of these things should really follow the goal of what we're trying to achieve for our students. As an agency, we've been very reflective and very transparent over our Listen and Learn Tour of really trying to identify where are the areas that we need to improve? What are the areas we need to amplify to best support the schools and our educators and education leaders across the state? And we're really actively engaging in process improvement and changes to design that. And that should be expected, because if we're really thinking about a transformation, you would expect all components of the system would be transforming and aligning their work to achieve our shared goals and intentions. So I see this as a really great opportunity for us to engage in that dialogue. So I see this as a really great opportunity for us to engage in that dialogue and really thinking about how we work collaboratively and productively to reach those goals of providing that support and oversight to strengthen our public education system.
Thank you. And just before I open it up to board members with questions before you, questions for you. Do you have any, you know, thoughts about how you envision the role of the board going forward? Just curious. And you maybe don't, but if you do.
So we, I don't want to get ahead of the governor in terms of kind of his recommendations, but we will be providing a report around governance. And that's really thinking holistically around governance for the entire public education system for the state. And so that will include clarification around the role of what we're proposing for the local school advisories, the role of school boards, the role of the Agency of Education, and at a high level, the role of the State Board of Education. I think we've been having conversations over the last several months, and there's certain things that would make more sense for a board to oversee than an agency. And I think this is the time for us to kind of outline those in doing, I think, what the board has been seeking is to really get that clarity around the scope and roles and responsibilities. But I do think that in our education system, there are roles that really make sense for the State Board to have oversight and function over. And there's others where it makes sense for the agency being kind of more embedded in the operational nature of the work.
So I feel like the board is on the periphery of these conversations because if the governor is putting together a proposal, that's wonderful because it's always easier to react to something. But let me just say, no one has reached out to the board for input on this. So it would be helpful to know what that looks like, whether there is an opportunity for board input. And maybe that's a question for the governor's office and when the governor anticipates having that proposal.
So I think that I know that there's been ongoing conversations over, you know, at least since my tenure, around the roles and responsibilities. And I think there's been a recognition that the transition from the department, when the transition from the department to the agency happened, there probably wasn't the same level of focus around also clarifying roles and responsibilities and delineating those between the agency and the State Board. And so I think there's remnants of that, that we've been having those conversations around. And this is really an attempt to kind of build and further on that and getting role clarity and also consistency with how other state boards would support, or not support, but would kind of work in alignment and coordination with agencies. So I think it's all part of that ongoing conversation that really probably preceded me and has been happening for the last 15 years of getting into kind of an understanding around what are, what are those unique roles and responsibilities? And I do think there are certainly activities that make a lot more sense for the State Board to oversee and activities that make a lot more sense for the agency. And this is just kind of doing that work that maybe wasn't done as in much detail during the transition and looking at how other state boards function in alignment.
Okay. And I just, I want to back up because I real, I don't want to, I want to be accurate in my earlier statement. It is not that the board has not spoken with the governor's office or the agency about this division of roles and responsibilities, but the knowledge that there is a proposal, you know, coming down the pike, that is new information. And I, you know, the board has not been included in that. So I just want to clarify my earlier statement.
And the large focus of that, again, is really thinking about the governance and support for our schools, right? And so the agency and the State Board kind of come after that. And so I think those considerations will be part of, you know, launching pad for further discussion. But I think really the first focus is around how are we looking to develop our overall public education system as a state? And what does that look like in terms of kind of on-the-ground support that's needed? You know, what is the future state of what we're looking at for kind of strengthening our public education, opportunities for innovation? What are the opportunities that are, what's going to be needed in terms of support? I think those questions should really drive the discussion around the role of the agency and the role of the State Board. And so the focus really has been more around the educational delivery and support for schools in our state and some initial considerations around kind of what the broader roles would be for the agency and State Board. But again, I think those really need to be driven by what we're hoping to achieve on the ground and what kind of support and oversight would be needed in the future state.
Thank you. Let me, let me pause there. I thought I saw a hand. Board members, do you have questions, comments? Great. I see you first.
Yeah. So you said before that you didn't think that, sorry, excuse me. You didn't think the State Board should, or is supposed to be a check on the power of the agency? If that's the case, what is, you know, where's that checks and balances system coming from and education leadership?
So I think that comes from our three branches of government, right? So the reality is the State Board sits within the executive branch and is appointed by the governor. And the agency also sits within the executive branch. So I think what we're talking about are what are the unique roles and responsibilities in terms of providing that oversight and support for education for the entire state system.
Kim, and then Tammy, and then Lyle.
I think I'm going to take a minute because there's a lot. So I like to be succinct and efficient with my time. I'm going to let others go ahead.
I'll come back to you. Tammy, and then Lyle.
Zoe, I have four questions. One, how do we reconcile the proposal and what you're saying right now? Particularly your reference to the Listen and Learn Tour and your proposal refer, you know, being grounded in the field's perspective? And we just took nearly 20 minutes of comment from the field in exact opposition to this proposal. So that's question number one. So I'm hearing you say Listen and Learn Tour, and this, these recommendations are informed by it. But we just heard from all the major organizations in the state coming out opposed to this with deep concerns about this proposal. So that's question one.
Question two. That's because I want to make sure I can answer all four of your questions. So I wasn't able to hear public comment. I was in other meetings. So when you say direct opposition, direct opposition to what component of the proposal?
To moving, to moving rulemaking to the agency. We took nearly 20 minutes of public comment this morning, and all that comment will be written from Vermont Superintendent's Association, throughout Principals Association, the School Boards Association, a principal in the field, a former employee of the agency. Like, we had 20 minutes of comment already this morning. And members of the Commission also testified this morning, indicating their opposition to this. So I'm having a hard time reconciling, right? You grounding and saying that this is field-generated and coming on the Listen and Learn Tour when we just heard 20 minutes of testimony from the fields telling us something exactly the opposite.
So it sounds like you're hearing feedback around a specific component of the plan to transition rulemaking, which is a mechanism, right, for us to deliver on? Some of what we've heard from the Listen and Learn is to have the Agency of Education be able to provide stronger support and ensuring that there is that very clear alignment between rulemaking and implementation. So this is a mechanism to be able to support that. Again, I think, you know, what I'm hearing in your questions and what likely you're intimating is that people want to make sure that there's room and space for public dialogue and engagement. Whether the AOE or the State Board does that, there's a process that requires a robust public education, I mean, public engagement in the work. That would be consistent. I think the agent, the State Board, has also talked about some capacity challenges and resource challenges in being able to do that. We expect that there will be expanded work in this area. So it really is more practical. I think if there's a role we can think of where the State Board provides additional value in that rulemaking process, that could be something that we explore. But the intention of this is really just to create alignment. It's very much a practical consideration and is consistent with how other state boards and agencies operate.
Thank you. My second question is going to follow up on that. So in recent history, the agency did have responsibility for rulemaking under the district quality standards. That was effectively a closed process. Right? Yes, there was a formal public comment period, but the entire development of the rule and the content of that rule was effectively closed. I was the liaison between the board and the agency on that. And I was told point blank at the time that anything I said was basically, you would take it under advice. And so a lot of that public comment didn't happen, not in the way that it's happened under the EQS, not in the way that happened under the independent school rules at the board rate. So what assurances do we have that we would have a different process going forward than the recent experience under the DQs? That's my second question. I have two more questions, but that's the second one.
So as you know, I wasn't here during the DQS process. I think there's probably a difference of opinion around the level of engagement. I think what I have been really consistent about since coming into this role is my commitment to having that engagement. So I think those are more of the technical questions around ensuring that, you know, people feel comfortable with the rulemaking process of getting that level of robust public comment. I think that's a different conversation than saying that it doesn't make sense to shift the rulemaking.
All right. Third question. In the process of working on the EQS roles, we received from the agency a determination that the agency's attorneys could no longer help us with the rules because there was a conflict of interest between the agency who implements the rules and our, and the folks that were developing the rules. So we had to seek outside independent legal counsel because there was a stated conflict of interest on the part of the agency in developing the rules that they were going to implement. How in the future is that problem going to be remedied? Because that was already a problem that the agency has pointed out to us.
Thing, I need to go back and understand what information was provided because that's not consistent with how rules are made for other agencies. But I think.
That's why we had to go get independent counsel, just a bit of history. That's why we had to go get independent counsel because we were told by the agency, by the agency's counsel that is still there, that that was not a role that the agency could play.
So I think that had more to do with the rules of professional conduct for attorneys that are hired under different entities than our ability to provide, to actually do rulemaking that we implement. I think that is a nature of how it was structured in terms of the rulemaking practice because other agencies are, it is fully within their purview to develop rules that they implement.
And Tammy, let me just say, like, my understanding of that was that the conflict wasn't with regard to the rulemaking. The conflict was with regard to having an attorney who works for the agency advising the State Board of Ed, which is a different entity. And so the conflict of interest is having an attorney represent two different organizations.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
I'm jumping in here, but I would say having served on 2200, where Emily Simmons essentially co-led that work with you, Jennifer, through the 2200 series. And then as it was described to us, the her inability to provide that same support on EQS because the agency would be charged with the oversight of the EQS is directly in conflict with the role she took on the 2200 series rules. And, and so I don't know where the actual answer is on that or where the willingness to provide support is or isn't or the conflict with crafting the rules and then overseeing the rules. But I need to make that a clarification. Having served on both of those committees and the 2200 in both iterations, that is, as you're describing it, Zoe, is not as it was described to us. And I think that needs to be made clear. That is unambiguous.
And I'll just go, I'll just also say, my understanding is the same as Kim's in terms of how that was explained to me. So if that was not the case, Jennifer, that was not my understanding of why that, why that occurred. And I was the co-chair of the EQS Committee.
Well, and you know, as we all know, we wear multiple hats when we come to this job. I can't quite take off the attorney hat, so that, that's why.
No, that's okay. I can't take off my school finance hat. I'm sure that's going to come up in a minute.
All right.
And then my fourth, and then my fourth, my fourth question is.
Wait, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Did, Zoe, did you have a response before we go to the fourth question?
It sounds like there have, there are some outstanding questions from pre, more recent rulemaking that we want to put on, want to document. But I, and we also will document the ability and to do rulemaking within an agency, which is more standard practice. But I'm hearing some questions really more around kind of the different engagement among the attorneys that were involved, which is different than our ability to, as an agency, to rulemaking. But I'm just hearing a need to make sure that that's clearly documented.
Thank you. And then my last question is, I know you just intonated that perhaps there's a broader proposal coming out with respect to the agency's role and the State Board's role. And, you know, correlation and causation are two different things. But I, in reviewing over the last week, Nate Test scores and what has been transformed, transpired in Vermont since 2012, when the agency became an agency and was not under the State Board anymore, there is a correlation between test score decline and the agency becoming an agency. And what I've heard in the field, and I think you're hearing the same things in your Listen and Learn Tour, but perhaps not connecting the dots in the same way, is that the field has been starved of support from the agency since that change. And so I'm just curious as to if, in fact, we have a situation where the agency continues to stay under the governor's office and potentially the State Board has even a more minor role. How, how, how is it that we move forward with making sure that the field has the support it needs to teach children, help them learn? Because that hasn't been happening. It has not happened, fundamentally has not happened, essentially since about 2014. And the legislature has gone to great lengths to make policy outside of the agency because there has been such a challenge with helping and shaping the agency from the outside. And that has created fragmented policy in this state, which is driving up costs, which is also creating serious problems for districts and implementation. And I'm curious how it is that you see your proposal addressing those concerns?
If you read our Listen and Learn report, the agency was really clear about where there are concerns from the field and where we have reflected that the agency over the past 15 years has fallen short. The correlation between how it's structured, whether it's a department or an agency, to me, is really not the point of that discussion. When you're describing as a transition, when the agency, when the department moved to an agency, that was also around the time of the recession where there was a significant reduction in the number of employees at the state level providing support. That has very little to do with whether it's structured as a department or as an agency. And I think the other piece of this over the last, you know, over a decade has been really clarifying what is the role of a state educational entity in partnering with the field to ensure educational quality. I think what we have heard is that there's greater need for support and direction and training from the agency. And that's exactly what we're looking to provide. You, you want your state entity to be able to be strong and supportive of the needs of the field. And that requires us as an agency to clearly define what those needs are and realign our services and our support and our initiatives to meeting those needs. That's how, what we've outlined in this plan. We've modeled new ways. That's how, what we've outlined in this plan, we've modeled new ways that we're going to be supporting the field, which are much more job embedded, really shifting away from writing up a lot of guidance to focused on providing that on the ground continuous improvement support. These initiatives like Reed Vermont are designed based on input from the field around what they think could be most impactful. And that's what we are continuing to focus on as we move forward. I also would say that our overall accountability system as a state is very vague. It's not very clear how we're defining and measuring school quality. And I think there's some intentionality of that because kind of a remnants of concern of No Child Left Behind and it feeling very punitive. But I think in many respects, we've gone the other way. And it's important for us to be able to have an understanding of school quality so that we can really as an agency facilitate planning across schools and across districts to understand what's working well and be able to build and leverage that to make sure that we're really, you know, bubbling up that innovation and that we're having really supportive roles for supporting schools. So this entire plan is designed around educational quality and creating strategic alignment from the state agency to the district, to the school, to maximizing the resources that are available for us all to be able as a state to elevate outcomes. So that's completely in alignment with where we're heading. We've been very open to the feedback from the field and very transparent about where we think we need to make improvements as an agency. And we've been very responsive just in the last several months of launching new initiatives to do that. So that's what you'll continue to see. Also in the plan, the governor has signaled an, an interest in increasing investment to the agency of education to really support that capacity building effort. All in alignment of creating that support for the field.
Thanks. Go to Lyle. Gray, I know you've had your hand up before, so before I go back to you, I will just see if other board members have questions. But Lyle, you're next.
Thank you. Well, you've been invited to go back, goes back to your question, Jennifer, or maybe it was a statement that we're going to go testify, and what should we be talking about? Obviously you will do that. For me, it's difficult to comment on a piece of a plan without knowing how the pieces support one another. And so I think it's, it's like looking at a business plan and only getting the first two pages. I need the whole thing so that I can see how everything supports everything else. So I think we need to be patient. And I think our, some of our questions maybe today or comments today are based on assumptions from our past experience. And we could spend a lot of time presupposing what's going to happen. But I guess I'd like to see the entire plan because then it makes it a little easier to react to. And how does it all come together? So just my comments.
Thank you, Lyle. I appreciate that. You know, something that would be helpful for me because it's clear that this part of the plan, this recommendation creates a lot of strong feelings and questions. I think it's really healthy for the board to document what those questions are, right? I mean, the intent of this is for us to be able to really be able to work in a way that's clear on roles and responsibilities to supporting the overall public education system. You know, I, I think we need to clarify where there are questions. I think Tammy and Kim, you had mentioned some specific questions or, or concerns from prior work. I think those are all things that we need to make sure are explicit and that we can address because the point of all of this is for us to really think about again, how do we support high quality public education that's equitable across our state? And part of doing that is really making sure that we're all clear on roles and responsibilities and that we have the expertise in the right place to do that work. So I think in order to further the conversation, it's making sure that, you know, you can ask those questions and we can be able to respond to them in turn. Ultimately, we're all working, I think, towards the same goal. We, we want to increase educational opportunities for students. We want to make sure it's equitable. We also want to make sure our, that this is sustainable. Given the kind of comprehensive nature of this proposal, and it's very appropriate for there to be a lot of questions. And so I would encourage you, and it would be quite helpful for me if you could, you know, document those questions. We've also formed policy sprint teams on these content areas to make sure that we're bringing those considerations and questions to the fore. And, and that's the whole point of this work. So I do appreciate the conversation and I know that it'll continue. But as concrete as we can get around the specific questions, that would be helpful so that we can all address them and make sure that we're, we're rowing in the same direction to get to improved outcomes and opportunities for students.
Okay, let me pause before Gray. Zoe, I know that you're probably right up against your time. Are there any other board member questions? Okay, let me go to Kim and then Gray. And then we might need to end it there.
Thanks. I think some of the questions that I was holding on to have been answered, but I have deep concern, Zoe. The suggestion that the agency has the capacity to take on the rules and that, I don't mean to even be so singularly focused on that issue, but in fact, that is an issue at hand. And in addition to the conflict and, you know, that may be handled differently in other agencies, I am not seeing that the agency has provided the oversight expected, for instance, on 2200 rules and the, the ability of independent schools to serve students with special needs as was demanded in July 1 of 2023 through Act 173. So that work hasn't happened. We are in arrears in the, I think that there's something in the order of 60 schools who are past their renewal date. And the state board can't take those up until the agency has done their process, at least in the way it currently exists. So the agency not doing the process of handling renewals in a timely fashion for independent schools has meant that these independent schools are long past their renewals. In many cases, those four therapeutic schools, for instance, we don't find out about until the founder has taken off with the money and the school's closing. And there's no intention on the agency's plan to even look at those therapeutic schools in the spring that are out of their renewal timeframe. So when I think about the capacity to do the work, I would be incredibly grateful to see the agency doing the work of oversight on the rules that are important, that have been established by the, the State Board of Ed. So I, I just, I simply do not see the part that's supposed to be happening, happening. And it means we can't even do our job on, for instance, renewals. And we can't trust that the job we're expecting is being done by the AOE with respect to the implementation of Act 173 that should have been effective July 1, 2023, and appropriately vetting schools that are able to serve students with special needs to be able to continue to receive public dollars. That most certainly has not happened, and we have been asking about it for years now. And that is exasperating to imagine that somehow now the agency is going to both create those rules and then be expected to handle oversight on it when the oversight isn't happening. And that was with well-intentioned development of those rules. You know, if the goal were to have the rules, rules be easier to oversee, I could imagine the development of those rules maybe having lower standards, for instance, or a lower input on the process. It just, it does not, it is not aligning in my mind with the role the AOE is supposed to be doing right now. And I, I continue to see the conflict that Tammy and I spoke of. I have deep concern as well about this idea that we are, should be looking at other states to see how they define the roles of their state board of ed when we literally, again, removed the national association of states, boards of ed as a resource. You know, this is not something that we are having anything other than a silo on our roles and responsibilities, if you will. We have, we have chosen to not either acknowledge or do many of the statutory things that are required of us in statute. And to have that be because we aren't resourced by the AOE is a problem unto itself. And I really think that we find ourselves in a conflict created by being held hostage to what the agency decides it's going to do before providing recommendations to the state board of ed. So there are many things broken about this construct as it currently exists. I agree, we have very little capacity to hold the agency of education accountable. The one thing we remain in the capacity to do is call to the public's attention, the concerns where we see the AOE not doing their job. I'm not sure where the question is in that, Zoe. It is exasperation because this design further politicizes and brings a central nexus of control under a governor for public education that is a travesty.
Not sure where the question is, but I, I think what
Can you lay our, how could you lay my concerns on any of that, Zoe? What do you have that could help me feel less concerned about those issues?
Yeah, so this plan is about raising the expectations and raising opportunities. In no way is this about lowering those expectations. So I, I want to make that very clear. The issues that you're talking about are very longstanding issues. I inherited an agency with many issues and I have been very transparent and very methodical in reviewing those challenges and making them explicit and coming up with solutions to address those challenges so that we can have a stronger public education system. So I think it's important to note and to share, like, what we have modeled as an agency is not a political process. We have been incredibly transparent. We have, we have really opened up ourselves to criticism and been very vulnerable around recognizing where there are shortcomings of the agency of education. And we did that in a way that was designed to build trust, to acknowledge that there have been very longstanding challenges and that we are committed to solving those. And being able to not just say, here are the challenges, but you know what? Here's how we, what we can do to support them. And we've done that in very concrete ways as an agency in laying out several initiatives to support the field. And we're also doing that and coming up with a very comprehensive proposal. What we're talking about, this proposal is not new. We have a state board of education report back from 1869 that references all of the same challenges that we're talking about today. There are newspaper articles all the way from, you know, back to the 1960s saying the same thing. What we're doing here is saying, you know what? This is so important. We have to be able to come together, be bold together, look at things in a new way and be able to deliver on what I think are shared goals that we all have. We want to increase educational opportunities for students. We want to make sure that our system is equitable and we want to make sure that it's sustainable. So I, I think what I'm missing in that question that you're asking is, how do we, as a state board, partner with the agency of education and thinking about roles and responsibilities in a way that's going to deliver on those opportunities? And, and I'm missing that in the conversation.
My question might be a little different, Zoe. I think I, what I'm not seeing, hearing is how the solutions that you're proposing solve the problems that I raised that are very, very real. We are well beyond renewal considerations for 60 independent schools. We have a field that doesn't feel supported by the AOE. We have the assurances or however it is you are going to implement the expectations to receive public dollars to be able to serve students with special needs. And in that, there was this prolonged battle about what was expected for an independent school to be considered to serve students with special needs, which resulted in the agreement that it wasn't going to be handled by a, a module of some sort. It required contracting with or employing, you know, a licensed special educator. It, it is the, what is it about what you've proposed or the governor has proposed that gets the AOE to do even the current job, much less those of crafting the, the rules, if that were in fact what was to happen?
I don't, I don't know that that's a question, Zoe. I think it's more a statement.
I think what you're seeing is the agency being a strong leader. We are listening to the field. We are being responsive to the needs. And we are building a path forward to strengthen our public education system. That's where we are. That's what we're all trying to do. I think what's concerning is that this conversation doesn't feel like we're all in partnership to getting there. But I, I believe that we will and what we need to make sure we're articulating clearly are roles and responsibilities. I, I think that's the key piece here and that's the key question. And making sure that we're all operating in a way that's going to strengthen the system, that, that's what we're here to do. The rulemaking recommendation is, is really a practical recommendation. And making sure that there's clarity around the rules and how they're implemented. What you're talking about is really a challenge in terms of, I think, the, the theory and the action. And we see a lot of big gaps in the agency between theory and action. There's a lot of well-intentioned ideas and theoretical underpinnings of many of our laws and our initiatives. But there's a big disconnect with practice. And so these are some ways that we're really trying to create and strengthen alignment there so that the agency can be stronger in providing that support. I think, again, to your question around the, the public engagement piece, I think there's opportunity for us to have those conversations around how the state board of education can be add value to that process. So I think we're probably having the, I think we need to be shifting the conversation to thinking about what are we trying to achieve when we're thinking about rulemaking, when we're thinking about the future state of the education transformation. And then again, from the beginning that we've talked about is how do we make sure that we're leveraging the right expertise at the right level at the right moment, right? Like, that's what we're trying to get to. So I would anticipate that we have further conversations and I, again, would encourage you to really document where you may have concerns or questions or where you think there may be additional value for the state board in that process to play a role.
So we definitely have documented over many months and now going on years, the concerns with implementation of 2200. And frankly, Emily was heavily involved in that. Emily Simmons was heavily involved in that. So actually implementing the rules and overseeing the implementation of those rules is in fact in the responsibility, even as you're describing it, if a future state had you build the rules, you would still be in charge of oversight of those rules. And yet that didn't happen. We have a growing slate of those private schools that are out of renewal compliance and the state board of ed can't take that up until we have your green sheets. So those are just two very specific examples. And to be clear, the field told us differently regarding the support and the expectations of what they are looking for. And you'll have the opportunity to watch the film and listen to public comment. It was not unique to just the rule, but it was, several of them were related to the accountability and the
I agree. But that's what we're saying, Kim. This whole plan is addressing that criticism. Like, we've been explicit in our Listen and Learn tour and all of our reporting to flag where there's areas where the agency needs to improve and strengthen accountability. This is what that plan is designed to do. You were intended to address the backlog. We've acknowledged the backlog. We have a plan to do it. I'm, I'm aligning resources within the agency in terms of FTEs to do that review. So this work is happening and I hear that there's not a trust. But we're being very explicit and concrete around naming where the challenges are, coming up with a plan and resourcing it to make sure that we can deliver. So as, as your secretary of education, that's what I can share with you. We are all clear on what the challenges are. We, as an agency, have We as an agency have actually documented those challenges in a very forthright and transparent way. I'm not sure I've seen that before. And we're committed to doing that because it's the right thing to do. We need to be able to say, here's how we've got to work together. And we also need to acknowledge that some of the structure of our existing system is inhibiting our ability as an agency to be able to provide that level of support. Some of the challenges that you're addressing are related to how we're organized as a state. We're overly complex in terms of how we're managing of, of what would be considered a small number of students compared to other states and other large districts. So part of the governance proposal is to really streamline that. And some of that simplification will also ensure and address some of these broader challenges that you're, that you're talking about. So I would encourage us to kind of hold on, on that conversation because it is really a three-pronged approach. And it is looking at what are some of the larger systems issues of how we are delivering education that we also need to address to make sure that we can have a high level of accountability to those expectations because we have some fragmentation within the way we're organized as a state education system. So I encourage us to continue those conversations. And exactly what you're saying, we've itemized and said, how do we actually address this holistically? Because it's not just one change. That's why this is a comprehensive approach and I get that it's hard to wrap our arms around all of it. But we're committed to continuing the conversation and doing the big work because we need to. And as I said, all these issues have been documented. And now the opportunity is thinking about how we come together to effectively solve those and to, to really build a stronger public education system. So I, I know that there's a lot of questions. I know there's a lot of fear with change and with the unknown. But there's also a lot of opportunity and excitement around how do we come together collectively to transform our public education system for the better for students? So I do warrant, I do note your concerns. I think it's important for us to have these discussions. But I don't want to lose sight of the opportunity we, we all have ahead to thinking about how we strengthen our public education system. And we need to do that in a way that is responsible. We need to do that in a way that builds transparency and trust. And we're committed to that, which is why I'm sure we'll have several more of these conversations. I'm sure I'll write several more reports and respond to those questions because we need to do that. And I, I think if nothing else from this conversation, I, I hope you hear that commitment from, from me at the Agency of Education and to doing that work and, you know, rolling up our sleeves, understanding what the challenges are and working collaboratively to come to the solutions. And the, the governor has really signaled a profound commitment to public education and really thinking comprehensively around how we strengthen the system. So I, I'm confident that we'll continue to have these conversations and engage in a productive dialogue so that we all feel really good about where we're headed.
Great. And then we need to pivot.
Yes.
Yeah, um, my, I'm really concerned with the checks and balances aspects of this change. I mean, you talk about trust, but I don't think that it's about trust necessarily because you know, that's kind of how the government works. I don't think there's any room in government for an I trust you sort of statement because there has to be accountability there. I mean, let, let's put it this way, let's say, though these changes goes through, which would basically mean that the agency has, you know, a lot more power. We're talking about strengthening public education. More specifically, what we're saying is we want to strengthen the agency. And in my opinion, at the expense of the democratic process that's being lost here. Let's say this happens, the agency has considerably more power, the governor is considerably more power. I agree, it would make it easier for you to accomplish all of your goals. And I don't say that I have personal doubt in your ability to accomplish these goals and I agree that that would help you. So let's say you get all of this, all of these things accomplished. Let's say you have a, you know, a fantastic next ten years, we fix all the problems with Vermont education using this system because the agency has a lot of power. Then someone else becomes Secretary of Education, then someone else becomes Governor. Things keep moving along and then those people that are now in charge of education in Vermont can do whatever they want because they have a ton of power. And there's, there's no checks and balances system. It's just based on who is in power. And, and you know, we talk about it being political, but things are always going to be political. I think there has to be an acknowledgement that it's a political process and therefore needs checks and balances. Almost every major educational, you know, organization in the state has said this, the task force report. The task force report worded it, I think backwards by saying de-politicize the State Board of Education, for instance, which I agree with, but I actually think they mean politicize the State Board of Education. I, I think I would define politicize as to divide powers based into, into separate regions. That's what I define as political. And I think that's really important to government structure. And when we look through, this was said in public comment, this line of the plan and, but I know you weren't there for that. So I just wanted to read it again because this one really worried me. By placing rulemaking under the same entity that implements the rules, we can achieve greater efficiency. I mean, when I read that, that just really scared me. It's, it's a scary sentence because it sounds a whole lot like not democracy. And it's not, it's not wrong. It's a true statement. But you know, I, no one's ever praised democracy for its efficiency. No one's ever like a democratic government, that sounds quick. And I, I think there's a danger there in that efficiency that we have to at least acknowledge that most efficiency in government is always in sacrifice of a more democratic process. As in a process where more people have a say and there's more checks and balances of power. So my question specifically is, and I'm not even saying I'd like an inherent opposition to this plan, but there at least has to be an acknowledgement. So I guess it's not, I understand there's not a full plan. So my question isn't, is there a plan to deal with this imbalance of power? My question is just, is there at least an acknowledgement that this plan creates a pretty significant imbalance of power based on the system we currently have, which again is a system that I already think has issues with imbalance of power because the governor controls a ton of education leadership in Vermont. And most people have cited that as an issue and this seems like a step in the opposite direction. So if that's the case, there needs to be an acknowledgement because there needs to be a plan to deal with that. To say, okay, this is increasing efficiency at the cost of democracy. Therefore, we have this plan to have a balance of power so that it's not all just through the governor and the agency.
So a, a couple of things that you mentioned is, one, I, if when developing this type of plan, it can't be developed in consolation, in consideration of specific people, right? Like I think it's important to your point. And that's what we're trying to do, to develop a system that really will be future-proof and is established in a way that's going to be supportive of, of our goals for education and in alignment with the values of Vermont. So that's absolutely critical and I think it's important to take that lens as we're looking at any sort of policy proposal. I think the, the conversation around transfer, the strengthening of power is, is an interesting one and is not what we're talking about here. What we're talking about here is building a system that is ally, is, is equipped to support the needs of the field. And so that's about a structure that is matched towards the needs. The question around checks and balances and the political nature of a lot of this is, I think, kind of an interesting discussion. The State Board of Education members are political appointees of the governor. The Agency of Education sits within the executive branch. So I think this kind of conversation of checks and balances is, is, is really kind of a, a, is a little bit of a false narrative in terms of how it's currently structured. But the checks and balances come into place because we're all required to follow the laws that are passed by the General Assembly, right? Like that this isn't centralizing that work within the governor's purview. It's the General Assembly that is passing the laws that then the Agency of Education would be required to implement and oversee. And that the State Board in its current capacity in some instances would do the rulemaking for that. So those checks and balances are inherent in the system. But I think the questions you're bringing are good questions and making sure that we're thinking about how to intentionally design our, our system to be supportive of the goals, supportive of the values, supportive of democracy building and ensuring that across all areas of government, there are the appropriate checks and balances so that we can make sure we're delivering a high-quality education that is not politicized. I, I think that's where we're all, where we're all headed.
See, that I just that, I mean, that response really worries me because there's not an acknowledgement there. And you know, you said that this won't centralize things around the governor and I just don't see how that's true. I'm not even saying that's a bad thing, but we should at least not acknowledge it as a, a truth that there is some level of checks and balances, even if it's all within the executive branch right now. And I know you said that, you know, this, they're, they are still under the governor, which is what I was saying before. And again, lots of people like the task force report have cited that as an issue, that there needs to be more division of power. And this seems like a step in the opposite direction. I'm not saying that there isn't a way to do this and have it work. But I think the key to it not working is going to be if we act like there isn't a consolidation of power. I mean, that's what the sentence says specifically is if we combine the, I, I can pull up the wording again. It's, um, placing rulemaking under the same entity that implements the rules. That is combination of power. That's consolidation under the governor. I don't see why we can't admit that. I think there could be a way to navigate that and make it work, like you're saying, because it does increase, increase efficiency. And maybe that's what we need. But if that's the case, we need to say what we're doing, which is consolidating power under the governor and therefore appropriate action is required.
I would disagree that with that interpretation. I think what we, what we currently have and what we'll continue to have moving forward is shared responsibility. And, and that's an important part of this discussion. When you are referencing the term efficiency, that's making sure that the agency that's writing the rules and, and implementing them has consistency and that the field understands what that will look like. I think what you, we have flagged in some of this conversation is sometimes there is a disconnect between the rulemaking and the operation, how we operationalize those rules can create a lot of confusion. So it's really around that alignment and consistency. But as we move forward, I think the conversation we want to be having is how do we have shared responsibility around public education? And, and I'm sure that that will continue. I know that the board clearly has very strong feelings around rulemaking. But I, I think it is very unusual for the, the State Board compared to other boards within the state to having that outside of the scope of an agency. And so when I'm referencing the comparative analysis, it's not relative to the State Board of Education, to other state boards of education across the country. It's around how our current boards operate in relation to agencies. And again, it's getting to that shared responsibility. I know we'll have further conversations around those, those roles and oversight. And I think we just really want to continue to center those around what we're trying to achieve and looking at it in terms of the overall system. So I know we'll have further discussion and look forward to hearing what else you may contemplate in your meeting this afternoon. I, I do need to run to another call, but I do appreciate you inviting me into the, this part of the conversation.
Thank you Zoe.
Thank you.
So while we were having that conversation, I noticed there's a little bit of a disconnect and I just want to check in with board members because this was originally warned as a, well, when we sent out the doodle poll, it was a two and a half hour meeting. And the agenda that I had sent to Maureen and Suzanne contemplated us ending our meeting at twelve. I didn't realize, and my apologies, I only printed off the agenda this morning because I knew what I had in my head and I didn't realize that the agenda that's been published has us ending at twelve thirty. And I might point out, it also has forty-five minutes of public comment at the end, which I don't think any of us intended. So I just want to make sure that board members are able to go until twelve thirty? Or were people thinking that we were ending at twelve? Is anyone not able to stay till twelve thirty? Let me put it that way. Okay, so we will plan to continue on until twelve thirty. I'm just going to note that we will have public comment, let's call it from twelve twenty to twelve thirty. Just so that we have more time to focus on the task at hand. So now that we've heard from Zoe, I think what I would invite board members to do is, and I mean, here's the other thing. If we go until twelve twenty, that really gives us about twenty minutes to have a conversation about what Tammy and I would communicate back to House Ed before we turn to the issue of forming a legislative committee, unless board members need more time because this whole conversation with Zoe frankly went significantly over time. So what, what do board members think? And I don't want to belabor this conversation because we're going to chew up what limited time we have. Is twenty minutes enough to talk about feedback that Tammy and I can give to House Education?
Is it not, was that not a little bit what was just happening Jennifer? You were hearing the concerns raised by the board.
Okay, okay.
But maybe I'm misinterpreting. I'm sorry if I didn't understand your question.
Concerns weren't necessarily with regard to the proposal, which was my question for the board. So the, you know, the, the proposal that was included in the agenda packet was the proposal for the education transformation. So I don't know if there are specific questions about the proposal before we get to the issue of rulemaking.
You mean the governor's proposal for the whole thing? Isn't that what we were just talking about?
Well, I, I feel like we weren't necessarily talking about the proposal itself. But you know, just as a for instance, here are things that I noticed about the governor's education proposal. This is a huge fundamental transformative shift in education. The net reduction in overall spending is slightly less than eight percent. That's something that I would like to point out because that, you know, that it's a big change for eight percent. I also noticed that there is a difference in the base funding that the agency is proposing of thirteen thousand, twelve hundred versus the A I R proposal of fifteen five. I mean, that's a two thousand dollar difference for a base funding amount. I would point that out to the legislature because I think there's some room for conversation there. You know, I'm not, I'm not proposing that we have answers for this. These are questions that I would want to be able to share with the, the legislature. I think the reduction of fifty-two supervisory union supervisory district to five is a huge change that I think I don't know, but are there other models that might be less drastic? That is a question that I have. I can keep going, but that, that was really what I was having in mind when I was talking about. Are there comments or questions that board members have about the proposal itself? Tammy? Kim?
So many questions, so little time.
That's the point.
Yeah, I, I just want to, I'm, I'm going to, I want to do two things. I want to synthesize something that I think I was hearing in the exchanges we just had. And then two, I want to respond to your question. And so my hand was up for the first part, but now that you've asked the second part, I'll, I'll do that too. One of the themes that I heard, and I heard differing opinions on this from both the agency and sort of what we were talking about here, is that there seems to be different ideas about whether or not the existing roles and responsibilities between the board and the agency are as they should be. We heard from Zoe clearly that the perspective is, is that the current role of the board is, you know, we're part of the executive, you know, we're not independent, right? That, but yet we don't have oversight of the agency. We heard this morning from the field, a call for something very different, which was really an independent board, even as far as I think at least one or two people commented, that they would like to see the agency back under the board. And so I'm curious as to sort of our reflections as a group here after hearing all that. And then I graze exchange around separation of powers and sort of what this all means. In terms of how we synthesize that conversation for our reflections to the General Assembly, it, it seems to me that our reflections may be two things. One, there was a lot of concern. But the concern isn't just with the rulemaking that we are hearing and feeling larger concerns around the relationship between the board and the agency more generally and the existing governance structure there. And that's not included in the proposal. But that is, I, again, I'm hearing that from our public comment this morning. And I think that was front and center in a lot of the exchange we had this morning. So I just want to put a pin in it. Maybe we come back to that. But I'm just trying to synthesize what I heard across a broad range of conversations we've had this morning. So we can come back to that in terms of what we say to the legislature. In terms of questions on the full proposal, what I heard last week was that they will be, and I heard again this morning from Zoe, is that they are going to be unveiling a larger governance proposal this week. So it makes it hard for me to think and, and really evaluate whether five districts is the right number. You know, I think our work, and I'm going to wear my different hat now, has, has shown that there are inefficiencies with small schools in the state and that, you know, there probably is some room for consolidation. In terms of the foundation, the difference in the foundation In terms of the foundation, the difference in the foundation amounts for the base funding, right? That, those numbers were very different assumptions about what is this, what the future state should be, right? And so, and there are lots of reasons that we need to interrogate from my perspective, the number that has come forward in this proposal. But I, I don't know that we can do due diligence on that conversation on the time we have today.
Well, I think to your point though, Tammy, it would be worth acknowledging um or observing that the, the 13,2 versus 15,5 are based on different assumptions. And so that this is something that we think that the legislature should probably explore. So that would be a good thing for, for the board to, you know, agree that this is something that we should go back to House Ed with.
That's fine.
So let me just pause there.
If I may, I would just like to add in to what uh Tammy was saying about the five specific districts. I don't believe that that is a valid number that should represent the state. Coming from a region that's super rural, of course, there are a ton of inefficiencies within education. But I've heard complaints and disagreements from just about every level, coming from educated students pertaining to the issue all the way up to very high up positions like superintendents, saying that that number will not represent our community as well. So that is my personal contribution to that. I don't know how other regions feel though.
Okay, thank you Caleb. Okay, so we now have two things um which I would, so just to recap, because I'm going to do a straw poll. I would like board members to agree that Tammy and I should go back um and point out that the um, the derivation of 13,200 per student versus 15,500 per student has different underlying assumptions. And then we would encourage um the legislature to look into those. The second thing is Caleb's comment that he has heard um from students to the superintendent um that five districts is not enough. So absent objection, I'm going to note both of those things for um talking points that Tammy and I would then share with House Ed. Okay.
I don't think it's an objection, Jennifer. I just think it's, it's sounding oversimplified that the concerns with the base amount are just based on different assumptions. I'm not sure that we've been able to fully unpack the, the origins of the AOE's um base amount. I think that came out rather clearly in the testimony that they gave um the other day. I don't remember honestly now which day I was listening. But I, I, I guess I just don't want to oversimplify the concerns regarding the numbers at the foundation of the, the for, the foundation formula.
If I can zoom out here though, I wonder if, I wonder if the statement we want to contemplate as a group is the, the real policy proposal here is do we move to a foundation formula, right? As opposed to the current tax capacity, local control formula. And I think there, it would, I don't know that I would be comfortable getting into specifics on bases and things along those lines in this context as a group, because we haven't, to Kim's point, had a chance to really talk about that. And that is a really technical thing. What I think I'm hearing, or maybe the question that we need to have on the table is, does the state board in general feel comfortable with moving with this fundamental shift to a different funding formula, right? And I would also point out that that shift that's been proposed largely talks about how dollars go out, but not how revenues are raised, right? And so I just want to be clear, like that's, that's what we're talking about here. We're not talking about the revenue gener, the, the proposal is relatively science violent on rela, revenue generation. So perhaps we should take it up a notch and just say, you know, ask the question of this group. Based on your reading of the proposal, do we want to say that in general, we support or don't support moving to a foundation formula as opposed to talking about the base? Because the basis, the base is implicit in if you move that direction, right? Unless of course you keep the existing formula and make the base and you set the yield equal to one. But that's a really technical conversation.
Let, let me do a straw poll um and, and Gray and Lyle, I do see that you both have your hands up. But to Tammy's sort of foundational question, um I'm going to ask you, one of you, conceptually, sort of as a, a, and of course the devil is in the details, but as a general principle, do you support um the proposed shift to a foundation formula? So Lyle, let me start with you. Put you on the spot.
Oh, sure. Okay. Well, I'm going to answer with what I was going to say a minute ago, which is I need to see the plan. What are the implications of going to a foundations formula away from what we're doing right now? How does that affect quality and equity? It's nice to say it's going to be better, but I need to know how is that going to be better? And to me, that then gets into what is the governance structure around education at the end of the day? I need to see the plan, the entire plan before I'd be able to say, yes, the foundation piece plays a critical role in helping get to why. And I think what I'm hearing all of us say is we'd like to be involved in the discussion. It seems like we're just being, here's the plan, presented with the plan, although we're not being presented with the entire plan. Do I trust that everyone's going in the right direction? Yes, I want to trust that everybody's going in the right direction. But I want, I mean, back to Gray, I think Gray kind of hits things on the head. It's like, yes, it's a great plan, but you know, is it democratic? Is it the way people want to provide input? Is it, um, so I think there, there's more to be heard and it's hard to respond right now on one topic, the foundation formula.
Thanks. Tammy?
I don't think my hand is.
No, this is a question about fundamentally.
It's like, I, I mean, I agree, I agree with Lyle and um I have, I walk a fine line here. I have a lot of questions, right? And to Lyle's point, I think what we've seen is a very high level set of ideas. Many of those ideas in sort of an idea kind of way are things that resonate with me. But implementing these kinds of ideas as a coherent education, set of education policies is a much more complex enterprise. And while they may be good ideas, until we can really understand how they might be implemented, it's really hard for me to say, oh, I feel good about this or not, right? So in general, ideas around consolidation, ideas around moving to foundation formula from, in sort of my background, those things resonate with me. But to Lyle's point, I, I just don't think we have enough detail. I, I don't know that the legislature has enough detail. Like I, there just seems to be a lot of detail here. And my understanding is from last week is that the agency is going to continue to roll out detail on this, right? And so that's part of the reason I was feeling a little te, teeped this morning about trying to talk about the full plan as opposed to just the piece about the rules and response, about the rules. Because that does feel really concrete to me. It's something we could comment on. I, I just want to be careful that we don't start commenting on something that we just don't have enough detail to understand how it would be implemented. I don't know if that, Lyle, does that resonate with you? I, I think we're kind of saying the same thing, or tell me if you disagree.
I, I agree, and I think you can comment on how things have worked in the past and whether that's been effective or not effective. But it's hard to guess what it's going to look like based on what we know right now.
Thank you. Gray, and then Mohammed?
Uh, yeah, I don't like giving cop out answers to things here, but I do think it's, it's appropriate in this instance because I, I don't think it's really necessary for us to take a stance on this as a board. So I agree with everything that Lyle and Tammy said. But if we're going to talk about, um, I, and I, I will say that I at least think I can agree that there is something that needs to be changed about how we do education funding. So that's something that I fundamentally agree with in the plan. So I do think it's possible that we can say that as a board, that we agree that change is a good thing. And just a, a general thing on how we do funding is that, and this is kind of, this is a little way out there from both plans. But I think, and I'm not like a, a financial guru or anything, but I do feel that uh, a large problem with how we look at Vermont and when we look at Vermont education spending is that we spend a lot of time looking at, um, you know, per pupil spending. And I don't think that education works in a linear way like that. You know, we tend to get into a system where we think of, you know, funding for a school should be based on the population of the school. And that's something that I inherently disagree with um on a very basic level. You know, we, we look at it often as like it increases exponentially, where really it's more of a, you know, if you have a school with 200 people versus a school with 100 people, the school with 200 people isn't going to require twice as much money. Um, and obviously, you know, that's not what we're doing here. But I do think there's a tendency with trying to come up with finance formulas that goes back to some understanding that there's a basic amount um that is like good per pupil funding, spending versus bad per pupil spending. And I, I just on a basic level disagree with that. I think if you wanted to create a, you know, a sort of graph between um students in a school versus spending that should go into their school or just education in general, uh, you know, it would look more like a, it would look like this. It's not to get too technical, but mathematically that would be, you know, um positive exponential growth, but negative concavity, right? So that as the, yeah, uh, as it goes over time, there's, there's less need to increase spending. Not to, to get too into the weeds or anything like that, but I do see a basic problem with that. And I think that particularly affects Vermont because Vermont's population is so small and we have a lot of really small schools. So we see some of the biggest differences there with how much money is actually needed per student. And I just hope that's generally addressed with how eventually down the line we fix finance spending.
Well, and I just, I want to pick up on something that you said, Gray, that, you know, a school with 200 students isn't twice as expensive as a school with 100 students. And that recalls for me, I think it was on page 13 of the proposal where there's a chart that goes through like elementary schools and the middle schools and, you know, really trying to keep the student teacher ratio at, you know, 16 to 17 to one. And what I noticed is that um it's doing the exact opposite of what you're saying in that situation where like when you go from a school with 200 students to 100 students, in order to keep the student teacher ratio the same, you're actually reducing the number of teachers and specialists. And the thought that I had was if you're in a K to eight school with 100 kids, this formula is suggesting that you only have six teachers and one and a half specialists, which you're actually losing opportunity in that situation and not gaining opportunity. I don't know how you would have one and a half specialists, you know, taking care of PE, art, language, like that, that was an unanswered question for me. So I, I think to your point, um, yeah, you can't just scale down, scale up um in a linear fashion. And I think.
Nor should you.
Yeah.
That's not, that's not how these things work. And Gray, I'm happy to chat with you a little bit. You're, you're right. And I can, I'm happy to chat with anybody who wants a little background in school finance. I mean, what, what those numbers effectively do is create scenarios where small schools can no longer operate, right?
Right.
And so what it does, it's essentially delegating to the districts the responsibility to close schools.
So I.
Because they will be unable to operate at those levels.
I would like to point that out, um, you know, to add that to your list of things to, to point out.
And I think that's come up in critiques of the evidence-based model with the school size, right? But you can get to the same spot with class size. That said, let me also be very clear. The evidence in the field does not suggest that eight kids in a class is an optimal class size, right? In fact, small class sizes, the research evidence, for example, I have Tennessee Star and things along those lines, said that small classes primarily benefits students who have other factors in their lives that make learning more challenging for them. But on average, small class sizes, you don't even see big gains. So I want to be careful that we are not in a position of the boards suggesting that small class sizes are somehow a model that, you know, is evidence-based, because it's, it's not, right? But I think what you're identifying here, Jennifer, is the downstream effect of imposing this kind of, right, this kind of foundation that's built on a class size model is basically going to get to the point where we have schools that can't operate. My question is, and this, I think this is very relevant for the state board to consider, is whose responsibility is it going to be in terms of ensuring educational opportunities? Whose responsibility is going to be to tell districts when the schools are so small that they should no longer be operating? We know in this state recently, we've had a number of instances where we've had micro schools operating where there have been challenges around educational quality issues and those schools have stayed open for a while. And so one of the things that I have a question about is if in fact we're going to create this structure where certain schools are no longer, districts are going to have to face really hard choices about operating small schools. And there is intense pressure from their local constituencies that say, don't close our small schools. And the schools continue to operate and the opportunities go down. Who is going to close, who's going to step in and enforce the decisions to close schools? Is that going to be the agency? Is that going to be the state board? Who's going to do that? Because that is pretty murky right now. And we've bumped into that. So to me, that's a really relevant question for the state board to be under our current governance structure and sort of the murkiness around statutory responsibility. To me, that's a relevant question for us to be asking.
Okay, thanks. Mohammed?
I, uh, by the numbers, I am very skeptical. Numbers do not reflect needs of the learners. Let's say you have 10 students in a classroom. It does not mean all these 10 students, all of the 10, have the same needs. Think of students on an IEP. What extra support they would need in that classroom of 10. That's extra support, hence extra money. So the numbers do not reflect our reality. I just want to point that out.
Thank you. You know, as I think about this proposal generally, um, I, I do think personally that it would be helpful to point out things that at least I like, um, which I would, you know, I'll leave that to conversation. But I think that I like the policy objection, objectives of expanded early childhood education, increased after school and summer program, ensuring access to specials, increased access to mental health services, increased college and career pathways and greater teacher salaries. Conceptually, I think those are laudable goals that I would support. Um, and I think um I would want to point out that I, I share in those objectives. I also like the proposed funding to um career tech centers in a way that doesn't hurt the sending districts. Cause that's something, you know, that the board has um heard that when you've got small schools and they're sending students to, you know, CTEs or dual enrollment programs, the schools don't get any of the money, um, and that ends up hurting the schools. So I, I like the fact that there is a provision to help rectify that. That I would also, you know, point out that I think is helpful.
Hey, I wanted to add, uh, multilingual learners services has been a struggle in the field as well. Being in the field, being in the schools every day, this, the, uh, the needs are enormous. What we need to think about is how much of mainstream teachers are trained to work with multilingual learners? How much of mainstream teachers or ML teachers are trained to support special, I mean, not special education, but let's say students on IEP? But all those factors are huge and need to be considered. And we are behind in literacy when we look at our data. A science teacher might tell you, I am not responsible of literacy. Or a math teacher can tell you the same, but that's not true in reality. If you are a math teacher, you know your content, so you should know how to teach your content. Knowing to teach your content involves you or includes you to take. involves you or includes you to teach literacy in math. You cannot just come to a classroom talking about algorithm without defining the word algorithm, putting it into context. It doesn't make sense. Hence, a math teacher is responsible to be a part of our literacy recovery as well. So let's not just think of reading to be led by a reading specialist. That's not true. It's, it's, it's the work of every educator. I just want to point all those factors as, as well.
Thank you. Tammy?
I'm wondering if we might just take a straw poll generally among the board to say to your point, like those are all laudable objectives that I think at least I support. I, I think it'd be good as a starting point as we start to shape our testimony, right? Like, let's start there, but then I hear or, and I, I know I'm feeling this way, is that there's a lot of detail in the implementation that we just don't have. And perhaps these other comments that are percolating can, can become four instances around the kinds of things that we would like to know more about. And I'm sure that others will have add to this list too, but you know, here are some things that we as a group came up. And so under those four instances, I think one of the things that's unclear in this proposal is within the context of larger districts, whether it's five or 10, whatever number that is, is there going to be inter-district choice among schools, right? And how do independent schools fit into that model? And so I think that's a, like independent schools are, are an important part of our existing educational landscape. And they serve a lot, they serve, you know, a share of our students. So it is unclear to me how it is in the current proposals that we talk about inter-district choice within, across publics, is that going to be, is that going to be something that continues? How would that work? And would that be delegated out to the individual school boards? And so we might have inter-district choice in one district versus another. Are we going to say something that all districts have inter-district choice? And within that model, once we make those decisions, where do independent schools fit in here? And what would the tuitioning look like under a foundation formula model? Because a foundation formula model says this is what on average a student needs to succeed. And I, just in my experience, raised questions about whether or not it could ever be the case that you have a foundation amount that you pay to a public school or that you use as an intra-district voucher for students to go to different public schools within a district that, that foundation amount could not differ for a tuition amount to an, to an approved independent schools without running a foul of the production clause. So I think those are things like, that's a big deal in this state, really understanding how that works. And I think that would be another for instance that I think we just need more detail on.
Yeah, I agree. So before we pivot, pivot specifically to the question of rulemaking, are there any other comments that board members have about the proposal itself? Kim?
Thanks, Jennifer. So I did not weigh in on the foundation formula. I would echo Lyle's concerns. We don't, the details matter in what this would look like, the assumption of an 8% saving on, on a major upheaval, I think presumes that we understand and believe the numbers as they're presented. And I think there's much to be unpacked there. So I think that is of concern. I don't disagree with the doing something differently and ideally having it be something that our communities can more easily understand. Our, our formula currently is quite complex and I think that is a disadvantage in our system despite its intention to align for equity. So I, I think I would, I would say we are not at a place to be able to say either wholeheartedly yes on foundation or wholeheartedly no. Details matter and presumptions and assumptions about numbers matter. So that would be that position. I think on, there are a number of questions on the notion of the amount and how that fits in a tuitioning system. In, in five districts, they would all be operating pre-K 12. So that calls into question where that fits with respect to tuitioning elsewhere. So I think it all falls in line with Tammy's questions on that point. And Jennifer, if you could just, you ran through a list of three things, CTE funding being one of them, that you were going to use sort of foundationally as you are pointing to things we can't we all agree? And I apologize, but I lost the other couple of things that you said, other than CTE beneficially not being as harmful to home districts in this model.
Yeah.
What were the other?
So I had mentioned that as something, and you know, to Tammy's point, I think it would make sense to sort of start with in general, what I'm proposing is that the board could say that we like this idea of revising the, the CTE funding formula so that it doesn't hurt sending districts in the way that it has till now. And, you know, we saw that, when was it? Last spring? When we were touring, oh, I'm sorry, I forgot the name of the school. But they, they had talked to us about how they lose a lot of students to
Twin Valley.
Yeah. No, and I, I agree with you. I don't
Yeah.
I don't disagree with you, Jennifer, at all on that. I just, you had mentioned two other broader topics other than CTE.
Yeah. I thought That was the second thing. And then the first thing that I mentioned was, you know, fundamentally on page one, I like the policy objectives that are set forth. And so I would start with just acknowledging that these are laudable goals. Expanded early childhood education, increased after school and summer programs, ensuring access to specials, increased access to mental health services, increased college and career pathways and greater teacher salaries. So that was all, I mean, I lifted that from page one of the proposal. So my thought was to start with that and then, you know, reflect, and I want to circle back because, Kim, I realized when you said I hadn't asked you about, you know, where you fit on this, I also need to sort of tie that off with Mohammed and Caleb. That I, I think what I'm hearing is, you know, this general idea that we can't come out in support of or not this foundation formula because we just don't have enough information. And then to go to Tammy's point, you know, here are for instances that the board members have identified as places that we would like to see more detail before, you know, rendering an opinion on this. But does that kind of get what you were asking about, Kim?
I think so. And I, and I, I guess I, I, I'm not, yes, it's that, those all seem like good goals. This is in alignment, the idea that we don't have the information to either endorse or not endorse foundation formula. I think the details on things like even after school that, the and early childhood, there are details in those things that could have unequal implementation and unintended consequences as had been the case with our preschool funding that happened many years ago that has, you know, in evidence created a bigger divide, just simply because of the limited number of hours available. So, so I think, I'm not sure I've fully thought through each of those individual checkmarks. But, you know, philosophically, I think those are ideals that I think can be embraced. But I don't know how specific we necessarily need to be in that. I think the broad goals of transparency and accountability and those that are at the very top are things that are not arguable.
Yeah, okay. I will add those to the list. Let me just tie off with Mohammed and then Caleb to make sure that you two are also in agreement with this idea that the board just needs more information before we can weigh in on your, our support or not for the plan. Mohammed, I'll start with you.
I agreed from, from the beginning of the meeting, absolutely. But we do need some more details. And furthermore, how could we even be more involved in such decisions, getting our insight input before we even get here to where we are? Because if that does not happen, we may just end up being presented with a final document. And then do we even vote on it? I even would question that. So yes, we need more details. Thank you for your second.
Caleb?
Yeah, I absolutely echo what Mohammed is saying. I would like to place specific emphasis on what Tammy was saying earlier involving school choice specifically with independent schools. Because I know around here, even if you live in a place like Coventry, you're allowed to go to a school out of the country and you get less tuition. So I would be intrigued to know how that may differ or stay the same with that new process.
Thank you. And was that your question? Because I saw that your hand was raised earlier.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, great. Let me go to Gray and then Tammy, and then I'd like to move on to rulemaking.
Are you asking me just my general question now about the plan?
Yes. Yeah, because I already heard you say that you agreed with Lyle's suggestion.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Um, this is unrelated, but a general thing that I think is important about the plan. And I think this is important in, in general with governance is that I think the ultimate enemy of administrative leadership is failure to understand the pros of the system already in place. And I think that came up in the rulemaking conversation a little bit because, which I know we'll, we'll get back to, but when we talked about, you know, potential consolidation, my concern was based around the advantages of the system we already have and the reason for there being a separation in those who implement the rules and those who create the rules. And I think in all three of those, the main, major sections of this plan, it's important to acknowledge that, like if we think about, you know, having a five district plan, we've got to think about, well, what are we losing from having more districts? What's the danger there? And in the way that the plan is laid out, they go through the changes that are, need to be made in Vermont based on all the disadvantages of the way things currently work, which is important, but I think it's equally important to go through and look at all the advantages of the way things currently work, because to change things will be to take away the advantages provided by those things. Like if we, you know, if we think about changing education funding, I think just inherently, it's good to have a list of, these are the things, you know, why do we have the system in place that we're now talking about taking away? And that's just, that's not a specific suggestion about a thing to change, but a suggestion generally about how to look at this plan and how to look at the problems of as we move forward, we should think about all of the advantages of the systems that are, that are being removed. I, I often think about, my, my English teacher told me a story about a month ago, it's called of Chesterton's fence, which is a parable about the same sort of thing. The, the idea is that this guy named Chesterton, like lives in England, he buys this big property and he has a house on the property. It's a bunch of wide open field and it's beautiful, but it's surrounded by this really ugly fence and he doesn't like it and he doesn't know why it's there. So he goes about a very long process of removing the fence to make the property look nicer. And then when he wakes up the next day, his property is covered in sheep because all the flags of sheep were being blocked out by the fence and now they're all over his property and he can't do anything about it. And I really liked that story, which is why I relate it. Because I think it's important, you know, when we look through each of those things to make sure there's an acknowledgement of, you know, what fence are we taking down? Not to say that taking down the fence isn't a good idea, but that we need to set something else up to make sure that those holes are, you know, are still being plugged. And that's what really worried me in our conversation with Zoe, because I had a fear that there wasn't going to be an acknowledgement about the imbalance of power. And my fear was correct because it didn't seem like there was any sort of acknowledgement. And, you know, any change is going to come with its advantages and its disadvantages. And I think it's really important that we analyze both.
Thank you. Tammy?
And Gray, that sort of sets up my comment nicely. Thank you for doing that, which is, I think in terms of our values, I will also want to put in there that I think stability or not introducing unnecessary instability in the system and being thoughtful and deliberate is also needs to be a guiding principle here. I understand we have some things needing to get fixed and there's urgency, right? And that's always important in education because every year that goes by is another year of education for a child somewhere. So we do need to move quickly to adjust some of these things. But creating inherent, creating unnecessary instability in the system also hurts kids. And so I think we've got to balance this, right? Need to move quickly, need to be innovative, need to do some new things with, right? Making sure that we, we keep the system still stable enough that teachers can teach, kids can learn, schools can operate, right? Et cetera. Because if we don't, we will, this, to Gray's point, right? There will be unintended consequences here. And that I think we have to sort of weigh these two things as we move forward.
Thank you. Okay, so let us quickly move to rulemaking and board members' specific feedback on the proposal that would shift rulemaking from the board to the agency. Kim, let's see your hand first.
Thanks. I think I need to point out the facts of the way it went with DQS. We were engaged as a board, as a stakeholder group. We got a presentation from Dan and the agency. I think there were some others who were involved, like the ESB was involved in helping to craft the governance section. I, I think there were many occasions that stakeholder groups were brought together, but I had a sense that at least as we experienced that meeting, it was more being spoken to rather than
Wait, let me just interrupt for one second, and I'm sorry to do this, Kim. So because Gray and Caleb weren't there, Dan French was the former Secretary of Education. So there was, there, there was an act that for the first time ever gave the agency responsibility for implementing rules with regard to district quality standards. And there was a timeline and there were things that the agency had to do. And one of those things was that the agency, and at the time it was Dan French who was the secretary, had to give a proposal to the board, you know, to share that proposal and take feedback from board members. So with that little background, Kim, all.
Yeah, thank you. And there were others, but I think as opposed to juxtaposing it to the rulemaking process that we've been undertaken as a body, I think important to that is the robust public meetings that we had. The, the DQS went into formal rulemaking and they held, I think, three public hearings. I think only one person attended, one of those, and otherwise nobody attended those public hearings on DQS. We were the only, Tammy and I were the only public comments submitted and we submitted it in writing and it was a couple of pages of concerns that we were seeking specific changes that would align it with EQS expectations that we knew to be required and that we're going to remain in EQS. The way that public comment, the single public comment they received from Tammy and I was handled was in a phone call, not a public meeting, but a phone call with Tammy and myself and Heather and Emily. So there was no public discourse, even public to be heard regarding the concerns we raised in our public comment. There was actually also, I don't believe, any response in changing those, the text to those rules. And that was the end of their public comment, public engagement with respect to district quality standards. That would be a terrible disservice, I think, for those impacted by the rules to have a non-public process. So I, I raise that as the only tangible example we have of how the agency would do rules and would be required. I'm not suggesting they broke the rule, broke the law to do it. They could do what they did and they did it.
Let, let me put you on the spot here for a minute too, because I, I first came on the board when you were sort of, you know, up to your eyeballs in 2360 and 1300. And I remember that there was from, you know, people who had submitted public comment, and you're going to remember this much better than I will, but that families in particular wanted to have more of a role in the development of their child's IEP. And I remember that there was some resistance by the agency, but there was like such a public outcry about, you know, wanting to, because I think the agency had proposed something about how the IEP meeting was going to happen and the families were coming to the State Board of Ed meetings to say that they wanted more voice in the development of their child's plan. Is this ringing bells with you?
You know what? It's now going on six years ago. So I know we had endless amount of endless amount of public meetings for that subcommittee. And we had a substantial amount of feedback on those rules. And I came into them to try to lead us through the end of that and had some support from the, um, one seventy-three working group as well. So I'm not sure where you're going with that, Jennifer, but we were doing those rules at the time.
I know.
And we were actually having a problem. The, the reason why John Carroll put me on the liaison on that was because the one seventy-three working group would have their draft. And then, you know, intentional or unintentionally, the A O E would give a different version of their draft to the State Board of Ed out of sync with being able to get feedback from the Act one seventy-three working group. And so John Carroll was frustrated with that disconnect on getting feedback from the working group that was established to inform those rules. So he just had me liaising for a while and then, and then basically he had us try to lead through the end of, not the funding piece of it, but the other piece of it. One, E, three, six, one of them. I don't really know, but.
I, I didn't mean to like put you on, I mean, I did mean to put you on the spot. I didn't know if you would remember, but I can go back and look. I just remember, and my point was that I think the agency's proposal for, you know, what those meetings were going to look like, um, was different than what families were asking for. And because those families had the ability to come to State Board of Ed meetings and provide public comment, the rule was then changed, um, in response to those comments. So my point is.
No, I believe that to be true. And that was, you know, a very similarly, very robust process, not dissimilar to what Tammy and myself and our committee is, as it evolved over time, went through on EQS. Um, I think I've had the privilege of sitting on every rule committee that, um, has existed since I've been on this board. So, um, I understand our process to be dramatically different from that, which was overseen by the A O E with respect to DQS. I will also say that personally, I believe there are regulations and rules out there that are far more procedural, that should not be a rule that we need to, um, be responsible for. And I think, you know, those maybe are more guidance related or otherwise. So I think the big questions of ed quality, C T E, independent schools and special ed are big areas of what we do and value and, and what we are holding our state accountable to. Those are big bodies of regulation that should have the type of public input that the State Board has made a body of its work. You know, I would also argue DQS would have benefited from that. Um, but there are other rules in the books that are both outdated and perhaps not rising to that level of broader what we value and, and speak to considerations. Um, those that are more about how we do the procedures, I would argue, you know, probably do not benefit as greatly from the State Board of Ed's ru- role in that. But this wholesale idea of shifting it would set the system up for a very non-public meeting handling of even public comments in the process. Yeah.
Thank you. Tammy?
I think there are a couple of things to consider here. And Jennifer, you know, you've heard me say this before, like, State Board's a public and public education, right? And so one of the functions we serve is to be able to ha- have, provide public access to the process. And I would argue that education rules are not the same as the rules that govern gas pumps, right? Like, the regulations are different. And we here at the board, and I think it's reflected in what I would call the substantive rules, which are the E C, EQS, C T E, the independent school rules, special education rules. To your point, Jennifer, there was a, there's a lot of back and forth there, right? Where we need to make sure that the rules are really reflecting, not just best practices in the field, right? But best practices for implementing those rules in the Vermont context. And one of the ways we do that is we check in with the Vermont context and we're, right? We get that public input to be able to do that. So that would be the first thing. I, I find that the comparison between sort of the education, the canon of education rules and sort of the role of the agency and the role of State Board that was sort of put forward in the comments before by Zoe, I don't find that, I found that a false comparison, right? Like, this is not the same thing as roles in other agencies, right? We're doing something here. We're, we're do, we're educating kids. So that'd be the first thing. The second thing is that I hear a lot about efficiency. And I'm, I'm an economist, right? But, you know, like, I like efficiency. I also like equity a lot, right? And I think that we, one of the challenges that we constantly have to ha- have to check on in education is this balance between efficiency and equity. The DQS may have been a highly efficient process, but I'm not sure all the voices that need, I'm not sure all the voices that needed to be at the table were at the table. And if I reflect on my experiences with EQS over the last few years, right? I'm not sure that process would have benefited from being efficient, right? We took in a lot of public comment and through all of that, not only do I think we have a really good rule, it's an imperfect rule, but it's a good rule. We have a rule that in general, our public schools feel is implementable and reflects more broadly the values that we all hold. And so I think we've got to be a little careful with sort of the efficiency trap here, right? Like, we've got to balance these two things. And so the efficiency argument, I have a trouble with that argument because I'm not sure that we should always be expedient, right? And rather be thoughtful. The third thing is, is that I think we've already suggested as a part of some of the conversations here, that we need to, we do need to think about revising how we, how we approach our canon of rules. I don't think we need all the rules we have. There are things that are in regulation that shouldn't be in regulation. And I agree that there are rules that need to be sunsetted and handed back over to the agency to help them with operating efficiency. We, we don't need to be signing off on every time a school district needs to lengthen or shorten their school year, for example. That would be something. But when we talk about those, those core rules around education quality standards, career and technical education, independent schools and special ed, those are different. Those are substantive. And I think they all need to be in one place. And the example that I've given on that is it should never be the case that if a child goes from one side of the hallway to the next, from a, right? From here to a career technical education experience, and that they're under a different set of rules. And we've seen this in our independent schools' roles as well. Like, we've done a really good job on the board of making sure that the protections and the opportunities provided to children, whether they go to a public school or an independent school, are effectively the same. And then the last one I'll make is one that Gray made that still resonates with me is, yes, I think everybody's trying to act in good faith right now, right? We've got, we have sort of the political spectrum that we have right now. I don't know what we have for ten years from now. And if anything we're, I'm learning in this moment is that we can't predict what's going to happen ten years from now, the people that will be in power and how it is that they might choose to exercise that power. And what I would really, really find disturbing is if ten years from now, that power was consolidated some in one place and there was no public access to those rules and one or two entities went into those rules and effectively made substantive changes that were not rules that, not in a way that sort of reflects the rest of Vermont's values. But I think that's sort of in this moment, that really is standing out to me because I think we can see how that is playing out in other, other places. So I would like to communicate all of those. Like, I think those are really strong arguments for why it is what we have. And to, you know, Gray's point about the fence, that fence is there for a good reason, right? And tearing down that fence can create other unintended consequences that I really don't think are good ones.
Thanks. To that, I would just add, um, you know, as we all know, we are, by last count, I think we had thirty-five thousand dollars left in our budget to get us through the year. So as I've said before, and I will say it again, that amount of money doesn't allow us to do anything substantive. It just doesn't. Um, you know, we, we have to pay for recording, we have to pay for advertising. Um, you know, we've got board member per diems. And, you know, if, if we want to do anything, um, and we don't have counsel assisting us, um, we don't have money. So it puts us in a really uncomfortable situation where there is work to be done. I think board members would like to do it. But as we think about, you know, how things are going to change, um, it is clear to me that one of the things that would have to change is that the board needs more support. And there, there needs to be money flowing from the General Assembly to allow us to do the work that, you know, we stand ready, willing and able to do. So I think there are many, many good reasons for keeping at least some aspects of rulemaking with the State Board of Ed. But with that, needs to be, um, more money coming from the legislature to allow us to do that. And I think that needs to be a conversation that the legislature needs to have and that they really need to commit to resourcing us. Because I think we've been limping along for going on thirteen years now. Um, and I, I think that has really led to a lot of the problems that we're experiencing right now. Um, you know, there, there's a lack of clarity as to who's doing what because there are things that the board is charged with doing, but there's no practical way for us to do them. So we don't. That leaves us open to criticism. Um, and I, I think it would be a lot cleaner if we had, um, clarity over what we were doing and, you know, how we were being resourced to do that work. Um, Tammy, I see your hand is raised.
And just to build on that point, just quickly, is I think it's important to note that our current budget is embedded in the agency's budget. And we have taken budget cuts that were imposed on us by the agency. Right? So we are on, we, we had been under-resourced, but we are even more under-resourced at the moment, right? And I, I am reflecting that in both our testimony, Jennifer, when we presented both the Senate and House and just sort of how the board worked, there was some surprise to learn, like, you know, we have very little control over our budget and it's not very transparent. And so it, part of this conversation, I think, would be not just to resources, but to have that be a line item that's visible and not underneath the agency.
And I, just to add to that, I, I will say people were stunned in both Senate Ed and House Ed that we have been limping along with seventy thousand, seven hundred, eight dollars for the last several fiscal years for the work that we've been doing, that that is all the board has been given in terms of, um, funding. So peo- people were surprised. I will, that's a fair statement. Um, okay, Kim, I see that your hand is raised. We are, you know, really running out of time here. I don't see members of the public with their hands raised, but that's an open question. But before I go back to you, Kim, I just want to make sure that I've heard from, um, everyone who wants to opine on this. Um, so if you don't have anything to add to it, that's totally fine. But I haven't heard from Lyle, um, haven't heard from Mohammed, um, and Gray. I'm not sure I've heard from you either on this point. So Gray, I see your hands raised.
Yeah, I mean, I talked about it before, so I, I feel like you guys have a good idea of my opinion. This is the one section of, um, the plan that I can say I have a pretty decisive opinion on. Um, I, I mean, I try to look for the positive side of things and I tried to do that before in our conversation with Zoe, and I really am just not seeing it after that. If there's not even that recognition there, that there's a, a problem with this proposal. So I'll, I'll go as far as to say I strongly disagree with that aspect. I, I do not think that we should consolidate rulemaking like that. I do think there are changes, uh, that should be made. I can agree with them on that. But i- in the opposite direction, I think the type of stuff that was talked about in the task force plan, as I keep alluding to, made a lot more sense than this, which seems like the direct opposite of what almost all public comment I've ever received about the State Board is, which is that there should be a greater separation of powers, that there's currently too much consolidation under the governor. And this just seems like not at all an appropriate response to that.
Okay, thank you. Um, Caleb, let me turn to you.
So I don't know if I am giving my opinion on this or not, but I a hundred percent echo with what Gray is saying. I mean, I think it's kind of unreasonable to expect that level of consolidation to happen. I mean, it's like having the president cross-check his own executive orders. It doesn't really work li- like that. I mean, th- they would just be able to do whatever they wanted at the end of the day, especially in the future where we don't know what happens, as Tammy was saying earlier. So I would agree with Gray that I, with a hundred percent certainty, don't agree with that action.
Okay, thank you. Kim, let me turn it back to you for a final word.
Well, I think it's been noted that the A O E doesn't report to us, but nor do we report to the A O E. And I don't think we've done our best at asserting whatever version of independence we have available to us. I, I've noticed that shift over the six years that I've been doing this work. There's been, I think, less separation. Um, even if, you know, exemplified by where we show up under the A O E budget. I know that's always been the case, but I think, um, we've had no independence there. There are other statewide boards and agencies that, or statewide boards and commissions on which they exist with their own budget. I think that is an easy consideration. I think there was really impactful testimony by Armando Villaseca, who was in the role as the last commissioner and the first acting secretary. And he testified in House Ed, I believe, it was last Wednesday maybe, but I dropped it in our chat. And I think it was really compelling to highlight the value and importance of independence in that role and the relationship it demanded. Um, when there was collaboration with the State Board of Ed, the credibility it afforded the role in having the field be able to access and the healthy disagreements that could ensue with an administration. He also reflected his experience in having been, um, felt more engaged with the governor as commissioner regarding education matters than he did as acting secretary in that transition. And, and that spanned, I think, two different administrations. And I believe we have been sort of hearkening back to that both collaborative and accountable relationship that existed when, um, it was commissioner versus secretary. I guess in the end of the day, whatever that role is, we have lost accountability in the system. I think we have, um, also seeded whatever degree of independence we've had. Um, seemingly over the course of the last six years of my experience. Um, and I think that is bad for education. It's bad for our system.
It, it's hard to, and let me, um, respond quickly to this. We'll go to Mohammed and then I'm going to have to cut this off, um, because we're a twelve twenty-five and I do see a member of the public with hand raised. Um, we're in a tricky position. I mean, I'm remembering during COVID when people, um, came to our meetings and they were complaining about the mask mandates in schools. And, you know, people felt very, very strongly about this. But we have no authority over that. And so there is a disconnect because we're here, we exist. But, you know, once we lost oversight over the then Department of Education, we've really lost a lot of our power. Like, a lot of, a lot of what we hear, um, really has no connection to the work of the board. Um, so it puts us in a, in a, in a tricky position. Um, Mohammed, last word, and then we're going to go to a public comment.
Yeah, I just wanted to remind you about the public, actually, but thank you.
Okay. So thank you. Um, let me, let me just say, um, this has been a really, really, um, robust conversation. I really appreciate, and first of all, and I meant to say this earlier, um, the special meeting, um, people shifting their schedules around, you know, missing school, missing work, um, doing what they needed to do to be here. Um, I really appreciate everyone's input, um, and, and just thank you all for really having a deep conversation that I feel really confident that Tammy and I will be able to then communicate back to House Ed in a way that I think will really further these conversations. So thank you. Um, and also I want to thank Maureen and Suzanne and Media Factory for also hopping on this as quickly as they did, um, because I think today's meeting was really important. So with that, I see Dr. Mary Gannon. Um, we've been asking for two minutes for public comment. And if you have anything written that you would like to submit for inclusion, um, we can include it, uh, with our minutes. So with that.
Thank you. Can you hear, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. Thank you, Chair Samuelson. I appreciate the time. I have so much to say, but I'm, I'm going to keep my comments and thoughts brief. Um, first, just want to, uh, say hello. Um, my name is Mary Gannon. I have been working in the state since the mid to late nineties, um, worked closely. worked closely with Commissioner Velaseca and miss those days around the issue of diversity and equity in our schools, specifically around race, disability and poverty issues and the way they show up in harassment in our schools. So that's, my work has been around equity. So when I hear Commissioner Saunders speaking about educational equity, I think there's a large gap between the way she's describing that and the way some of us are describing it in terms of what's happening in our school culture and climate. I just want to appreciate the robust conversation this morning. I haven't been able to join many of your meetings and I learned a lot. Very helpful. I also appreciated the exchange between Kim Gleason and Secretary Saunders and really naming what we know to be some of the gaps in terms of what the AOE has not been paying attention to for many, many years. And I think, you know, that's been endemic. I remember the days of the Safe Schools, Safe and Healthy Schools Project through the AOE that was really instrumental in helping those of us who are working on the grounds, support staff and teachers around school culture and climate. We have such an increase right now in racial harassment and other forms of harassment in our schools around language, around disability. Mohammed, I appreciated your mentioning of this earlier. And one of my deep concerns that I'll just share with the board, and again, appreciating that, you know, there is only so much that you have the power to impact. But there's a real negligence on the part of the AOE and the governor's proposal around it talking about the importance of paying attention to those issues of equity and harassment that are happening and what the proposal is suggesting to do. We know that impacts students and families who are already marginalized in the state. This proposal will impact them even further. So again, I won't take more time, but, you know, certainly I'm not hearing anything from the AOE around Act One, around EQS. I work with a lot of school boards. They're throwing their hands up right now, wondering how they're going to support their schools and districts to implement some of these really important pieces of legislation that Governor Scott did not support. So thank you again for all your work and for the time.
Thank you. Any other members of the public? I'm not seeing anybody. Board members, you will note that there was one item on our agenda that we did not get to, which was the discussion about the Legislative Committee. This will roll to our February agenda at our monthly meeting.
Jennifer, just, can I just inquire on that? How then will future requests for testimony be handled? I mean, this is a matter that we have raised minimally since August, but I think even before that of having informed testimony. I don't think it's reasonable for the full board to be able to come together at moments' notice and special meetings for three hours.
So I can appreciate that. I I thought it was really important to get full board input on these topics because they are, you know, somewhat existential questions that go right to the heart of the 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 reason that we exist. So it felt important to me to have a full conversation, and I'm glad that enough people were able to show up and join in that conversation. To your question, I mean, Tammy and I, and I I will say this in our February meeting, Tammy and I were invited to go before House Ed and Senate Ed. It was the same testimony that we provided to each. One of the, we kind of divided it in half. I was in charge of explaining the role of the State Board of Ed. This is the same presentation. This is now the third year that I've, you know, dusted it off, updated it. That, to me, doesn't feel like, you know, me thinking outside the box, this is what the State Board of Ed does, this is, you know, our statutory authority, this is how we're organized. You know, I will again submit it as part of our agenda packet for the February meeting, but that that wasn't, that's looking backwards. That's work that the board is doing, has done, it's how we're set up. Tammy was talking specifically about the EQS. Again, that's work that the board has, you know, really spent a lot of time with, and I think Tammy felt very comfortable and I supported her being able to represent the board's work, because this is work that we have all engaged in. Today felt different. And so that was the reason for the special meeting. So I I think that this has been a really helpful conversation, and it wasn't just a couple of members who were talking. You know, everyone who was here this morning, I think, had really, really good insights.
Yeah, and I don't know how we get a, like, this was born for a vote, the idea of a legislative committee. I appreciate that we're out of time. It continues to be pushed, and I think it is a disservice to informed testimony and representation. I would feel as though it should feel that it would be a tool for you rather than something to stand against. But it seems as though it has been pushed back against consistently.
And we ran out of time in part today because you had a lot of really good questions, and I I wouldn't want to have taken that away from you. So that was a decision.
No, understood. And it's not just my questions. I'm just saying this continues to be a concern that a number of us have raised for a number of months now and, you know, that we're still debating this in mid-February or end of February is a little silly, so I hope it'll be worn for action. It doesn't seem like, you know, going with the version two of the email that Tammy sent is even, I'm not even sure who would be against it. So.
All right, we're going to leave it there. I need to go. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Moved by Mohammed.
Mohammed moved. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Tammy. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of adjourning, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, we stand in adjournment. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks.